Madam Chair, we are ready.
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Lyon County Board of County Commissioners, Thursday, August 4th, 2022, just after 9:00 AM. Action will be taken on all items unless otherwise noted. No act will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. To avoid meeting disruptions, please place cell phones and beepers in the silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. The Board reserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Items may be combined for consideration and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Restrictions on comments by the general public. Any such restriction must be reasonable and may restrict the time, place, and manner of the comments, but may not restrict comments based upon viewpoint. Board of County Commissioners can meeting as other boards. Members of the Board of County Commissioners also serve as the Liquor Board, Central Lyon Vector Control District Board, Mason Valley Mosquito Abatement District Board, Walker River Weed Control District Board, Willow Creek General Improvement District Board, the Silver Springs General Improvement District Board, and during this meeting may convene as any of those boards as indicated on this or a separately posted agenda. Take note that this meeting could break between 11:30 and 1:30 for lunch. And roll call, we've got Commissioner Hawke Day, Commissioner Henderson, myself, and Commissioner Jacobson in chambers, and Jeff, help me out, was Ken able to zoom in?
Not as of yet, ma'am.
Okay, so please note that Commissioner Gray is not present at this time. At this time, we're going to do the invocation given by John Poundstone of Joy Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could please rise.
Good morning. Heavenly Father, we come before you so thankful for your provision, your protect, your protection. We humbly seek your presence, your wisdom, and again, your provision. We thank you for your mercy, grace, and truth. May your, again, your presence reign at this meeting. May you guide the participants and our leaders well. And as we approach the end of summer and this fractious, tension-filled season with all of the different things going on in the atmosphere, may, may Lyon County become known as a beacon, a beacon like your holy scriptures say, that maintains the unity of spirit through the bond of peace. May we love over and above agreement. May we be loyal over and again, over and above viewpoints. Father, again, thank you for the privilege to join in your presence. I pray these things in the name of Jesus, the Christ, amen.
Commissioner Henderson, could you please lead us in the pledge?
Please join me. A pleasure to be here. United States of America and to the Republic of the States, one nation, united in this whole, with every justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. Okay, at this time, we're going to do our first round of public participation. Again, no action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. It is anticipated that public participation will be held at this time, though it may be returned to at any time during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their name for the record and will be limited to three minutes. The Board will conduct public comment after discussion of each agenda action item, but before the Board takes any action. Afterwards, please print your name at the clerk's desk, or if you're on Zoom, please spell your name. So do I have anything that's public participation not on the agenda today? Take a spot. Sorry, I got distracted. Jeff came up here, started playing things. Give us this one second. Hey, Mr. Mayor.
Roy Edgins, City of Ferley Mayor. I'd like to thank the county staff, especially the Sheriff's Office. We had Tuesday night, we had National Light Out at the out-of-town park, really good turnover. There was a bunch of people that came. It was actually bigger than last year. Thank you for supporting that. I know we've put some money in the budget this year for that. We did as well, and we had hot dogs and we had hundreds of people come out and talk to our sheriffs and the fire departments out there and stuff, so we really appreciate that. And we look forward to doing it again next year. Thank you.
Well, I'm glad to hear that it was very successful. I apologize that I missed it. I actually talked to the sheriff as he was on his way to Ferley because I wasn't going to be able to make it, but he was, but I'm glad it was a great success. And so we look forward to next year. Mr. Jacobson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Mayor, we appreciate that. I apologize as well for not being there. I got the privilege of dropping my daughter off at college the last couple of days, and so.
Like you said, it was, we appreciate the fact that it was a joint effort between the county and the city. And we appreciate that you guys put some money. It was the first year we did it. We did it on a shoestring budget. We, it cost me a couple hundred bucks, but we got it done this year, so it was really good. I look forward to doing it again, so hopefully we'll be able to put our budgets next year.
Mayor, doesn't it always cost you some bucks out of your pocket? I think you walk around with a few bucks in the pocket and you're always handing it out.
He is a sucker for kids on fundraisers. I've seen that on numerous occasions. Thank you for that as well, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, thank you. Okay, not seeing any other public participation at this time. We are going to jump around just a little bit here before we get to our time specifics and go to item 7A for presentation only to recognize Justice of the Peace Lori Matthew. I'm going to pronounce her last name wrong. Is it Matthews or Mathis? It is Matthews. Okay, the spelling, I wanted to be sure, for her efforts and leadership in pre-trial services. Mr. Eric.
Thank you. Good morning. Eric Malowski, HR Director. So since her election as Ferley Justice of the Peace, three and a half years ago, Judge Matthews has been an absolutely wonderful colleague. She is sharp, she's hardworking, and she is a consummate team player. She's also very down-to-earth and quite funny once you get her talking as well. And given all these traits, it's probably no surprise in hindsight that she was sort of, I don't know if selected is the right word, but just became the de facto leader among the courts in, in taking over court services and bringing it into the 21st century and making it compliant with all the new bail reform legal requirements. Judge Matthews, I know, and that was a team effort too. I mean, the DA, public defender, the sheriff's office, the county, there were a lot of stakeholders in that, and I think all those stakeholders, here I go speaking for people, but would probably say that no single person was, played a greater part in the program's success than Judge Matthews did. And so we, we wanted to just take a moment today to give her a little bit of appreciation for that. She probably deserves a medal or something, but instead, we just have a certification for her. One thing that's cool about this appreciation initiative is that it didn't even come from, from us, from county management. We, we, I hate to admit this, but we're just going to go on with business as usual, being our cold calicels, until Ray, our pre-trial services supervisor, got in touch a few weeks ago and said, hey, you know, Judge Matthews put in a ton of effort on things like software, drafting pre-trial risk assessment forms, writing the standard operating procedures for court services, day-to-day oversight of the program. And she did it, you know, without any expectation of us showering praise and embarrassing her like we're doing now. But she just did it because, you know, it needed to be done. And it's really cool when a subordinate comes to us and says, hey, my boss is awesome. She, she, she was really working hard on this, and I think she deserves to be recognized for that. So I wanted to give Ray an opportunity to speak and say a few words as well. A little bit of context on Ray before I turn it over. He came to us in pre-trial services with over 20 years' experience as a police officer. He does a great job himself, is extremely valuable to us. And he also gets bonus points in my eyes because he's from New Jersey and is a Philadelphia Eagles fan. And so you'll see him in the winter with like a 1990 Kelly Green Eagles jacket, walking around the parking lot with that thing. So in addition to being a good employee, he's also got that.
Yeah, like Eric said, I just want to take a few minutes to recognize Judge Matthews. I've been here just over a year and a half, and I mean, I've had plenty of jobs and this, this job has been the best. This county's been really cool to work for. But she went above and beyond helping my department. We got totally transformed in what it was when I walked into it a year and a half ago. Went from one person to now we have three. And she has two courts that she handles, the Justice Court and Municipal Court of Ferley. And that's full-time, you know, stuff going on all the time. And she took on this role with this bail reform stuff going on. And she didn't dump it off on anybody. She didn't complain about it. She just took it on. And I just felt it, that's something that needed to be recognized. I mean, I know she would probably say we all had a stake, you know, and everybody did, the DA, the sheriff, the public defenders, y'all had input, all had a say, excuse me, a say in this, but she took the lead on it. And with all the other obstacles going on, she kept us all straight and together and got us to where we are now and and things seem to be running smoothly. So I just wanted to take that, take an opportunity, and I appreciate you giving that to me so I can let her know how much she's appreciated.
Absolutely.
Madam Chair, I may, Jeff Page, for the record. So for the board and the public's understanding, so the late 1990s, early 2000s, the postal county commission entered into an agreement with a consultant to look at jail overcrowding and a variety of other issues. And in 2006, as a result of that study, the county decided to create a pre-trial services position. The first person we had was a gal named Allison Cole, and she was here for quite some time, doing that job until she went off to do something else. But at that time, the position was there just to reduce the population of the jail. Get those folks that were not violent offenders, made her drug dealing people, get them out of the jail quicker. But the courts were still a bit reluctant to just give the power over to a single person to do that. So we had some cumbersome challenges as doing that. As Judge Matthews got more involved, and she became the elected Justice of the Peace, she, she began to get more and more involved with that process. I'm not really sure how she got put in charge of pre-trial services. Okay. And somebody, somebody said, okay, now she's in charge. Pre-trial services, even, I understand that there's some, some angst with people in regards to getting people out of jail, but we have to remember there's some constitutional rights and your innocence of proving guilty. And we really want our jail packed full of people who are there for minor crimes because they can't afford bails. And those folks that are released now have some supervision, to make sure they're showing up for what they're supposed to be doing. And where in the past, when it's Allison, it was pretty much just, here's the paperwork, they made the criteria to be released on only cognizance or lower bail. We now have a process in place. I will tell you that in talking with my counterparts, Judge Matthews didn't do this in a vacuum. She reached out to a variety of courts to see what they were doing, to what other counties were doing. She did her research. The other thing I will tell you is because of the work of Judge Matthews and the group on the, specifically on the bail hearings, I've had at least six different county managers, including two of the urban areas, contact me and say, what are you guys doing? We're hearing that you guys are actually meeting with the judges and the public defenders and the district attorneys and the sheriff. How did you do that? Because they don't have that type of a working relationship in some of those larger areas. And so because of her efforts, I'm very proud to say that I think we have a phenomenal pre-trial services program. I think we do an excellent job with making sure the right people are getting released when they should be, and keeping those that need to be locked up, locked up. And I can tell you from my own experience in the old days, back in the days of Judge Johnson and Judge Lehman and Judge Ostrander, the sheriff has always had the authority under his authority by statute to release people arrested for misdemeanor. So if the judge wouldn't know, and we were overcrowded, it came upon us, and we would know. Was it, there was no supervision, there was no nothing. We'd get the guy out the door, and three hours later, here he came again. All right, now we have a system that keeps that from happening. And so I'm grateful for Judge Matthews for working with us. Courts, courts and county administration don't always see eye to eye. You know, we, they have black robes, we have coats and ties, and sometimes common sense is, is removed when you put the robe or the coat on. But Judge Matthews kept that charge moving forward, kept us moving in the right direction, and I'm very happy to say that we have other counties and states that are like, they had to be doing what we did. That's not necessarily a first, but it's nice to see that. So thank you, Judge.
Steve Ryde, I just want to thank Judge Matthews on behalf of the DA's office. We were concerned when July 1st was approaching. The way she set it up has worked great for everybody, especially the DA's office. My staff has had no difficulties transitioning to the daily hearings, working with the court and all the forums, processes, computer systems that she set up are working great. So we appreciate her work on this and look forward to working with her in the future.
So Judge Matthews, you're trying to stand in the corner.
I want to thank every stakeholder that's been involved in making pre-trial services work to our bail hearings. It couldn't be done just by me alone. Everybody was willing to reach across aisles, shake hands, and, and work together. The board had to give us interim financing. We would have started July 1st with one pre-trial officer and no trained staff. So we appreciate the funds that were given to us to get the program up and running. Eric. Mr. Malaski gives credit where credit is due. Mr. Malaski has spent a lot of time assisting in getting the pre-trial services SOPs together for me. Mr. Foley has spent probably too many hours on the phone listening to me cry and whine, but I just, I'm very appreciative. I appreciate everybody being here today. I'm overwhelmed. I hate public speaking. Thank you so much.
And yet you're a judge.
And there's courts on, online, and I, I need everybody to know that this wouldn't be possible without those court clerks. Those court clerks have given so much of their time and energy meeting with me when they're still trying to do their own court calendar and coming up with designs and the process to make it work, and without them, it would not be possible either. So thank you so much.
She, she runs quick. Anyway. Commissioner Hawke, do you have anything?
Just that I can really appreciate someone getting in front of the, this bail reform and, and making sure that the county stays as much out of trouble as we can. I do appreciate all your hard work and of course, your staff working and you leading the staff. So appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, I just, just want to add my appreciation to, you know, pre-trial diversion is a really good thing and more people we can keep out of jail that don't belong in jail is a good thing. So appreciate all your work.
Just want to give a wholehearted thank you as like our colleagues here. So thank you very much. We appreciate you and your staff.
And then, you know, basically ditto, you know. I know we were all nervous when we heard about the changes and, you know, okay, July's first is coming, blah, blah, blah. So yeah, I'm very appreciative of you and everybody that worked with you to get this done. And you ran away really fast. I think Jeff should get a picture of you getting your certificate and with your colleague that, that actually put you up for this certificate. Did you guys want to join her or just? I'm giving you the option. You want, would you like to join?
I guess that's enough.
Well, I don't like to play dictator.
Mr. Ryan, let's go.
Okay, we'll get back in order here. All right, for possible action, review and adoption of the agenda.
Madam Chair, we need to pull item 20B as in boy. We'll, we'll be bringing it back at a later date. 20B as in boy. Two zero B.
Oh, gotcha. Okay. Anything else? Any other changes, requests?
We could pull the whole agenda and go home.
All right, you and Wes drank the same coffee this morning anyways. So can I get a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the agenda as presented with the elimination of item 20B.
Can I get a second? Okay, I have a motion, a second to approve the agenda minus 20B. Any further discussion? Obviously, we don't usually have public comment on this, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Oops, I turned my page around and now I'm on the wrong page. Get back here. Okay, so now that's definitely past nine o'clock. We'll get to our time certainties here. Six A, time certain, 9:00 AM, Public Hearings Bill number 22-08 for possible action, approve and ordinate amending Lyon County Code Title 15, the Lyon County Land Use and Development Code to add Chapter 15.280, street name change request and other matters properly related there to. Mr. Haskins.
Good morning, Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Community Development Director for the record. So today is the second hearing for this ordinance. I can run through the presentation if you want. It's the same presentation as before. We did make one change. Actually, there was a couple of changes that had to be made just to the wording, so that we could change it over to Board of County Commissioners for the final approval instead of planning commission. So with that, I can, I can do the presentation.
If you can just note where the changes were and.
Changes were in section C and D of the ordinance itself. It said upon completion of the comment period of the reviewing agencies and the community advisory board representing the community in which the proposed street name change request is located, the street name change request will be scheduled for the next available planning commission for a public hearing to forward a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. And then the next line is the Board of County Commissioners shall be the decision-making body subject to the appeal process as outlined in Chapter 15.
So any questions or further discussion?
I, I do have questions.
Okay, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It, it just reading this, I read this a little more carefully this time, so now I have questions, which is always a bad thing. On the second, eight, two eighty dash oh two, it says a person, so actually, let's, so anybody could request a street change. Under this, okay. But it says here, they have to, to, to do that, they have to submit a completed development application form. Could you just explain that a little bit?
Sure, yeah, that's our standard application form for planning items.
But it's just specific to that street.
Oh, yeah. I mean, there's a box you check on which type of item it is, and then, you know, fill out the information and.
Okay, and, and then on, down on the same page, online, 2015-28-03, street name criteria. The first bullet A says, "Street names shall be designated by the developer." That still should be in here?
Yeah, so when somebody creates a new tentative or final subdivision map, they put the street names on there and they name the streets for that development. So that's specific to what it's talking to there. This is if something gets changed. So it's creating standards for the street names themselves. And then if something, if somebody wants to change one, there's a criteria for how that gets done.
Any further questions or discussion from the board?
When I was reading through it, Madam Chair, I thought, excuse me, thank you, Madam Chair. When I was reading through this in that same section, the term offensive, do we spell that, need to spell that out? Because there's a lot of sensitive people out there, and anymore people are taking offense to just about anything. I don't know, I don't know the definition of offensive anymore.
That is a very true. A decent point, but that would also come before the board.
So we would deem it offensive. All right, that was my guess. That's where I was. That's all I had. Thank you, Madam Chair. Very nice job.
Okay, so with that, I'm going to go to public comment. Do I have anybody for public comment on this item? Seeing none in chambers, Jeff, can you, I only have a partial zoom screen over here. Okay, can I get a motion?
Madam Chair. Approve the ordinance, motion to approve an ordinance amending Lyon County Code Title 15, the Lyon County Land Use and Development Code to add Chapter 15.280, street name change request, other matters properly related there to.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Hawke Day, seconded by Commissioner Jacobson. We've already had all discussion, public comment, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passed. Moving on to 6B, time certain, 9:00 AM, Public Hearing Bill number 22-09 for possible action, approve and ordinate amending Lyon County Code Title 15, the Lyon County Land Use and Development Code to amend Chapter 15.234.01, site improvement permits and add Chapter 15.240, mask grading permits and other matters properly related there to. Mr. Haskins.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Community Development Director for the record. Similar to the last one, this is the second hearing for this ordinance. There were no changes between what was proposed or what was presented last time and this one, as it was proposed. Happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions or discussion?
Just one, Madam Chair, thank you. Mr. Haskins, did we have? It seemed like we had an incident with this where we needed to take their bond money to help clean this up here recent, or was that, am I mistaken?
I don't believe we've ever.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
At least not in my time.
Mad, Madam Chair, so to clarify, what this ordinance does for us is currently under mask grading, there is no bond. So if they begin the process and then they run out of money, die, whatever the situation may be, we're stuck with a big dust bowl. This will now provide us the ability to require a bond so that we can go in and mitigate the, the effects of their mask grading with nothing happening to it.
So to that effect, then we definitely have not called the bond.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. But do we have an instance then, Jeff, where we would have used it?
We, we've had a couple of incidents over, not recent, but after, during the recession where had this been in place, we could have gone after it to at least mitigate some of the hazards that we had with, with development that just stopped. I mean, it happens. I'm not here to blend the development, developers. Things happen in life, right? So had we had this in place, I don't know that we've ever gone, well, we may have. I don't recall off the top of my head. I've gone after somebody's bond to address the issue. But the other point I was going to make, and I just lost it, the train went down another track, so never mind.
Done jump tracks. Okay, so again, no further discussion up here, so I'm going to go to public comment. Anyone for a public comment on this item? Anyone for a public comment on this item? Seeing none, can I get a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve six B as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Jacobson, seconded by Commissioner Henderson. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. So far, you're getting off easy. Hard ones are coming. All right, six C. Time certain at nine AM, Public Hearing Bill number twenty-two dash ten. For possible action, approve an ordinance amending Lyon County Code Title fifteen. The Lyon County Land Use and Development Code to change the allowable uses within the resource land zoning district and other matters properly related there too. Mr. Haskins?
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Community Development Director for the record, yeah, so this is the ordinance that we're giving some folks, some rights back on resource land with regards to skeet and trap ranges and archery ranges, they were previously not a, not an allowable use in resource land, so we are changing that to a conditional use, requiring a conditional. And there were no changes to those.
Commissioner Jacobson, anybody have questions, discussion? No one down here? Okay, again, I will go to public comment. Anybody for public comment on this item? Seeing none, can I get a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt item six C as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Henderson, seconded by Commissioner Hawkeye. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? You're still getting off easy. Oh, you traded, you jumped the track this time.
Madam Chair, related to all three ordinance, just a comment I want to make, so I have received a number of phone calls or emails from members of the public questioning why we've had a number of changes to Title fifteen, some of those for Police Commissioner Keller was around. Or when we passed Title fifteen, we recognized that there would be changes, also, we have to recognize that as the county grows types of development come forward, that we were willing to work with the community to make those things happen. So the last one is a perfect example, we don't really have a place for a skeet or a trap or an indoor shooting range anywhere in the county. So we're willing to work with staff or with the public to get some of these codes in place so that we can make it simpler and easier and not required to be a big cumbersome project with all kinds of public hearings and those kinds of things that have to happen for master plan amendments or zone changes, those kinds of things. Try to make it as simple as possible for businesses specifically to be able to do what they want to do on the land that they own. And within reason, you know, back to my infamous methyl ethyl death factories, we don't want those sitting right next to a school or a church or those kinds of things. But if there's an appropriate place for that level death factory, then by all means, let's make it, make it so that they could actually.
Let's not make any appropriate places for that.
So my point is, is that you will continue to see changes on Title fifteen coming as we go through and we experience changes in types of businesses that want to come here, changes in state law or best practices or court decisions. So as with all of our county ordinances, from time to time, they have to be amended and changed. I'll give you a perfect example, one that will get my county manager report, we have a code that was written in nineteen eighty-three prior to us having a county manager that discussed records retention in this committee, and it is the administrative assistant to the county commission who sits on that panel besides a number of other officials. So we are going through our current county codes, looking to see, okay, where else do we have these little things that no longer exist or that are different? So you'll be seeing in the next year, a number of, besides Title fifteen, a number of ordinance amendments coming forward to kind of clean some of our codes up.
Thank you. Six D, time certain, oh, wait a minute, are we there? We're not there. Hang on. Moving forward. I know, I looked at the timer, whoa, wait a minute, slow down. Okay, so let's get to those commissioner county reports, Commissioner Hawkeye.
Real, real quick, did go to the National Association Counties Conference in Adams County, just outside of Denver. At the convention center there, went to a lot of workshops and classes and have quite a bit of information for people here in the county, just some suggestions, and they did discuss things about getting up to date on ordinances based on modernization of things that are going on. Attended an excellent class on the actual coordination between your fire and county and ordinances there for, that should be changed out to make sure that our communities are safer. I was one of the biggies there, of course, Veterans Administration, financing, ARPA funds, you name it, we went to it. So I just will have some things to discuss with part of the, with Jeff and her. Jeff and his staff, make sure that we get up to date and make everything safer. What I have.
Mr. Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also had the pleasure of attending the National Association of Counties Conference two weeks ago, was it? The time's been a blur since then. It was, it was, it was a good conference, a lot of good information was presented. I sit on the Public Land Steering Committee and they approved one change to their platform and thirty-three resolutions. And the reason to me it's important that we participate in national events and particularly on committees is that is where national county policy is determined. So that gives the staff of the National Association of Counties their marching orders, as it were, to go represent counties on Capitol Hill and with the various administration departments. So therefore, that's one of the reasons why I feel it's important that we participate. I too brought back a lot of information, I met with Mr. Page and passed some out to him. To him to decide if he wants to give it to his county or to his department heads or not, but there was a lot, a lot of good information presented. I also augmented the fleet of sheriff's vehicles. I brought the sheriff a new vehicle for him. So, so I don't want to see a budget request for our vehicles for a while, because you have to find really small deputies to fit in it, but it is cute. Since I've been back, I attended the mound house community advisory board meeting Tuesday night. And of course, they are a little disappointed with the possibility of a change in what building is going to end up being their community center. But you know, the new option has presented itself that we're going to have to look at, because as I explained to them Tuesday night, you know, we have to look at what's in the best interest of the county as a whole. Now, so it zoomed in to the Dayton Regional Advisory Board meeting last night, they had a very good presentation from Firewise Communities. On living in the wildland urban interface and things that homeowners can do to take steps to make their home more safer. And you know, ultimately, it is a responsibility to homeowner. So, and they have a program that will assist with that, so that's a good thing, and that may be something we want to have a presentation on at this level. And other than that, I think I'll be fine. Thank you.
Mr. Jacobson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I don't have a whole lot. I do want to thank our department heads that give us those monthly reports on activities throughout the county. I know Mr. Homestead just handed this one, and I get those other updates from the, from the department heads, and that is greatly appreciated. And I'd just like to thank our county commissioners for representing Lyon County at the National NACO. Thank you.
So I'd just like to add on, I was supposed to go to Adams County, but due to some family health concerns, I felt it was best for me to stay closer to home, and I'm glad I did. So sometimes you just make those decisions, what's best for your family. So, but I know that we were well represented and thank you both for attending and bringing back all the information. Also, I was at the Silver Springs Advisory Board meeting on Monday night and got a presentation from Central Lyon County Fire. I think it's the first time we ever had two board members from Central Lyon Fire show up in Silver Springs at the same time. So that was welcome. We had Captain Johnson there, and I guess they have an initiative that's going to be put on the ballot in November that we'll all be looking at. They're hoping that the voters will understand why they're doing it and agree to pay a little more taxes on their property tax. But we'll see how that plays out in November, but what it will do is it will finally man two fire stations that have not been manned in a very long time, twenty-four seven. And so I'm looking forward to more information from them as we move forward to election time. So with that, I will move on to county manager.
Good morning, Jeff Page, County Manager for the record again, a number of things to report on. This week, Aaron, working through the Nevada Clerk's Association, brought Ms. Julie Torres, who was a former employee of the city of Fernley, to meet with us, met with a number of staff members, elected official, appointed official and their staff, discussing records retention, public records requests. And basically, everything to do with records. A couple of years ago, I gave Aaron a goal in her performance appraisal to, because we do the minutes, we do the agenda to participate with the Clerk's Association, make sure we're doing things that we're supposed to do. That brought her this training and she asked to bring that training to us. Because we have a number of staff members in the last five years that, you know, are relatively new to the county and may not know some of the things that we discuss. So it was very good training, we had to make the point a couple of times that what Ms. Torres was talking about, she has control over it because she works for her city. And so there's policies they can put into place that we can't put into place because we have appointed and elected, and the electeds don't necessarily have to. I mean, it'd be really good if they do, but, and then you have the courts with the Sparks Court decision that judges can do however they want. We have, we have a very great working relationship, but just want to make sure those, it was very good training and we're very appreciative of Ms. Torres and what she provided. On the twenty-fifth of August, you've all received an email we sent out to the ECC group. We were, we will now begin the process of revising, reviewing and revising the county's emergency operation. Interestingly enough, to sort of re-understand, under NRS two thirty-nine C, that plan is not a public document because of homeland security. So I asked the State Division Emergency Management to provide me with a recommendation as to how we promulgate that document once it's done. If I can't take it to the board and the public media to take action on, how do we promulgate it? The federal regulations require that it has to have some form of approval. So we're, we're working through that process now. But we will, we'll have a series of meetings, the first meeting is trying to get everybody in one room or on Zoom at the same time, talk about what the plan is. We're going to change the format, we're going to follow very closely what the state's done, because it makes sense, instead of having functional annexes like fire EMS, law enforcement, they will now be grouped under essential, essential service functions, ESS. Similar to what the state's done with the federal government's done, so when ESFA in Lyon County is talking to ESFA in the state of Nevada, who's talking to ESFA DC, we're all talking the same thing. So we're, we're working through that process, it'll be, if the first meeting manned, it'll be a lot of people. And then when they figure out they have work to do, it'll be a smaller, and then we start doing the work, it'll be in the smaller. So we'll get there, we'll get it done. My goal is to have something done by the end of this calendar year, and I'm ready to send to the state by December thirty-first for their review. October eighth, the Nevada State Fire Marshals and Office in conjunction with the Department of Public Safety will be at the Fernley Out of Town Park to do a public safety day, and they sent to me, invite we sent out to the Sheriff's Office, search and rescue, any public safety entity within Lyon County to do a public safety day at the Out of Town Park. So we'll see how that pans out, State Fire Marshal's Office is doing this for part of the fire prevention month. Instead of doing some of their poster contests, those kinds of things, there's only a lot of support for anymore, doing something different, getting onto different communities to educate people about fire safety. So they picked Lyon County and Fernley specifically for that event, so more will be coming on that.
What was the date and time on that?
October eighth, and I, I'm not sure of the time yet, once we have, I have firm information, I will get it out to you folks. Don't forget, September, we're doing Nevada NACO up in Virginia City. For those of you that wanted to get a motel room, good luck, they don't exist anymore, they're all booked up. So some of us will be driving. But we look forward to Nevada NACO and moving on through that process. I will. We have at least one commissioner-elect, because there's nobody running against him in the general. So I will reach out to him and invite him to participate in that conference so he can start working on some of the pre-training things that NACO has offered. Usually in an election year, NACO does it in November, right after the general election, I'm not sure why they changed that, but we will, we will see about getting a Commissioner Keller to that training he wishes to go. Dustin has, Holman from Road Department has provided me a number of documents to sign. So we're beginning the process of the pre-engineering on Miller and Iasi and the road projects that were including ARPA funding, so that's moving forward. As the board requested, update on community center mound house. So I want to clarify, there has been no decision made by the board, staff not making decisions, we have looked at a variety of options, including the existing mound house fire station, that has caused me great consternation and multitude of emails. So we have looked at the mound house fire station, if Central Lyon Fire can, is willing to work with us on that issue, we can, we can remodel and build something within a year. Or if we can't, or the board chooses not to go that path, we can do the pre-engineering for the site. And then we can wait however many years it takes to get the money to build it. Keep in mind that what we're discovering is for a community center, the traffic flow, we're going to have to make some improvements to the road that go to that site. Where if it, if we were able to trade that line with Central Lyon Fire, they don't have the traffic flows, they wouldn't have to. So we're still having those discussions, we'll bring back to the board a final plan once we, they give you some options to choose from so that we, we have a general idea of where the board wants to go with this, but we're still doing investigation, taking a look at how much things will cost and how quickly we can get something built in the mound house.
Madam Chair. Just to comment on that, Mr. Page, and that was a point that I made Tuesday night at the mound house advisory board, is nothing has been decided. But we, but we do have a responsibility to look at all available options, so thank you.
Well, to be honest with you, I understand the community's concern. But almost thirty years ago, the Board of County Commissioners promised them a community center. I can design it, I can't build it. I don't have the funding for it. And, and the board will eventually have to make a decision on priorities for funding for capital projects. And not to speak ill of the board, but many times the board will see something else as a priority. And so I just want, we do have an option if this works through, for them to have something within a year, eighteen months, versus having to wait several more years. I would like for Mrs. Cash to be able to have a community center, not named for her in memoriam, but that one she can actually go to still.
I knew you were going to say that.
Interestingly enough, media has picked on, picked up on the fact that counties and cities are struggling to retain employees. So I've had a media inquiry as to where we are, what we're doing. And so I anticipate next week, based upon the emails, that they'll be out, talking with myself and HR and some of the things that we do to retain, because we can't compete with wages in Reno, Sparks, Washoe County. And Reno, Sparks, Washoe County are also having problems with retaining law enforcement specifically. I've directed them to go talk to Nevada Post and sheriffs and chiefs to discuss that issue, because I'm not the expert on why we can't keep cops in the state. Or for that matter, any state in the nation right now. But on the rest of the side of the house, what we're doing that's somewhat creative and different than what we've done in the past, like way people work from home, those kinds of things. So I will let you know when they come out and they do a thing, so you can see for yourself what we said to the media. So we're moving forward with that, see how that works out. And last night, we had crews out in Highway fifty corridor, dealing with drainages and those kinds of things. We anticipate, National Weather Service is telling us this morning that yesterday was just a tease that will have significantly more water today. So we'll be out, out and about, south in the county is a little bit differently, we don't have we don't plug up city drink or storm drains, because we don't have storm drains. There isn't a storm drain in the live, live in Smith Valley, there's only a few in Mason Valley, right? So, but we'll have crews out and about just checking, making sure that. So, but we'll have crews out and about just checking, making sure that if we have any flooding issue, we can deal with it. There was a report last night that Six Mile Canyon was flooding, it was affecting Highway fifty. I called dispatch this week, we see no reports. I talked to our road folks, there was just a bit of water on the roadway, but there was significant flooding up other parts of Story County. Their emergency manager sent a text out that they were in the process of moving to breed those kinds of things. So it did not affect Lyon County, but we may have some more tonight. It's just the typical middle of the summer flash flood things that we get. And so we'll keep moving forward there.
Let's hope we don't get hit like Ny County did.
No, no, Ny County got washed away.
Yeah.
Part of it moved to Las Vegas.
Have they relocated?
Yeah, and so we're fortunate there. Other than that, things are moving forward on a variety of fronts with the ARPA funding and those kinds of projects. And we'll be providing you more reports on that in the future. We are working right now with the development community on a couple of things. One of them is on the agenda today, but you know, the the general consensus is that we need to have better traffic safety along Highway fifty. So we're working with, because you're going to get phone, I've already irritated at least one developer that, you know, based upon the conditional use, based upon the findings of fact and the conditions, we are going to be holding developers' feet to the fire to work on those issues coming in, coming off of their, their property on Highway fifty and have those traffic safety issues addressed sooner than later. Not at the end of the subdivision, but at the beginning of the subdivision. Just so you know, when you get a phone call, community director came to me and said, why think bubble lines? No, we're going to, we need to hit this head on because what I don't want to have happen is eighteen months from now, things slow down and I've got things half done and I still have traffic problems. So we need to hit these things from the beginning instead of at the end. So if you get phone calls, call me right away. I will tell you exactly what I feel. Any questions or concerns?
Any questions for Jeff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you again, Mr. Page, for the information. And I guess I just said, I really enjoyed the Naco Conference in Fallon last year. Is that something that we need to get signed up for or are we signed up?
Talk with Aaron and she can help you get, either you do it yourself or she can, she can help get in there.
And I do not need a room, no.
Anybody else? All right, anybody need a break?
Yeah. Break, then we'll get to the ten o'clock.
Okay, I just wanted to check. Okay, we're going to take about a five-minute break or so. Here it comes. You're bad. Okay, I'd like to call this meeting back to order. I think we left off at elected official reports, although we have an Aaron. So I think we're going to the ten o'clock. Hang on, I got to get myself back in order here. Time's certain, ten AM for presentation only. A report to be given for the community development block grant, CDBG, opening for applications for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
Aaron Lopez for the record. Lyon County is announcing the community development block grant open application cycle for twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-four. The program provides communities with opportunities for resources to address development needs. There are several objectives I have enlisted into the report that you can review. The main one being that we have to reach low to moderate income. If your application or your idea to go forward with this does not meet that, then that's the number one thing that we look at. So if you have any ideas, I left my business card on the back table. You can contact me and that's the person that will review to make sure that it meets that goal. Possible grants included in the packet, I put a whole list of previous grant applications that were approved, but some of them are public works, ADA sidewalks, curbs, ramps, historic restoration, park rest, park pedestrian access ramp replacements. There's a whole bunch of different ideas that we can look at that would help revamp our community. The projected funding amount for this year is a little over three million. It doesn't mean that we're going to go out for the entire amount. Typically, we get less than that for grant application, but that's the total funding amount. So it's a competitive process. So whatever our application is, we have to make sure that we're meeting the guidelines and it's only going to be probably a smaller portion of that because there's a lot of other entities that go after this funding. Since nineteen eighty-two, Lyon County has received a little over six million dollars in funding. Recently, we did the Walker River border economic study. We did the healthy communities Silver Springs food pantry. And then we all lately, the current one that we are working on is the water, Silver Springs Mutual Water Company valve replacement. So moving forward after this meeting, whoever wants to put an application to after this funding, that we will have a hearing on September first meeting with the Board of County Commissioner. At that time, applicants will give you a presentation of what they want to move forward. You will select which ones that you approve of to move forward and then we submit that to the state for approval. So we only have two applications that us as an entity can put in and then two others from outside entities, so four total. So written comments may be directed to myself. My address is on the backup material and my email and also on the back table. And the handbook is also in place in the backup material. But like I said, you can also reach out to me if you need help with anything. How the program works is if after we find that you are low to moderate income for the application, I will give you a workspace within Zoom Grants. And then we start collaborating and working together. Now, I do not do the applications, but I'm there as like a resource to help get you through the project. I don't know if you guys have any questions for me at this time.
One quick, yeah. We're going to hear them September first. Did I not catch a narrow? What's the cutoff date to actually have the application in?
So we have to have it approval, the final approval in to Zoom Grants before October. So they have all this time to work on this space. The presentation to you doesn't necessarily mean that the application has to be completed, but they have to have enough to go on to present to you their idea, the amount that they're going for and that they meet the criteria.
Gotcha.
By September.
Okay, Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was glad to hear that, and maybe I should have remembered this, but the Silver Springs Food Pantry received the block grant you mentioned. What did, what did they get that, what was, do you recall?
They did the COVID relief funding. So we did, they got a ban, some food. And then we did some boxes that they put on, those connects boxes that they put on a foundation so that they would have a food resource during COVID.
Okay, so with that COVID kind of, some of that money may not be available for that. Are they still going to be able to apply for something here, do you think, from the guidelines as far as? Okay, good. And they will, they know about this.
Yeah, Wendy's, since he worked in the past, I feel like she's familiar.
All right, excellent. They've kind of come to us stressed and whatever, and for whatever reasons, things haven't necessarily worked out. But I'm glad to hear that there will be putting in for this, so thank you.
I just want to point out, this type of grant application isn't the kind that they want people to keep coming back for resources. So if you have a specific project, a one-time project, those are the ones that they're looking for. So if you have something you want to do for your car or your building, something that's a one-time use.
Commissioner Henderson, Chris Hockaday, anything?
So if we could just open up for public participation in that way, if there's any other ideas out there that people want to give us any recommendations.
Okay, so at this time, we will go to public participation on this item. Do we have anybody here in chambers? Seeing none, anybody online? Jeff, I'm going to leave that to you. Okay, well, I guess you get off easy today, Aaron. Thank you for the presentation. Okay, now I'm going to go back to elected official reports. And as you'll note in your packet, you have a report from the Canal Township Justice Court and the Dayton Justice Court. So do I have any elected officials? Mr. Sheriff. Tell us some good news. We need good news.
Breaking and well share for the record, just a couple of things. Tuesday night, we participated in National Night Out and firmly at the Hattie Town Park. It's an event that takes place all across the United States on the same night. Very well attended. Thank you, Shira. Between us and Human Services and the Fire Department, there was a lot of people there. Staff that represent Lyon County, that was very good, very good turnout. A lot of people showed up. There's some discussion about maybe changing the format a little bit for next year. Looking forward to doing it. City of firmly helped sponsor that they provided hot dogs and stuff and and it's very, very good turnout and it managed to not rain until the last 30 minutes that we were there. But when it started raining, it rained. On another note, we were approved for our Office of Traffic Safety Grant at the end of this year. So that program's gonna keep going. The state and it's basically provides its own type funding to run traffic enforcement on state highways. So that program's been approved and we're gonna keep moving forward with that. We're in the process of moving our radar trailers around. We thought we were making some good headway. We have four of them all together. All two of them broke. So now we're back down to two, but we're working on trying to get the other two replaced and we're gonna try to get one up in firmly here in the next couple of days. There's some requests for that. So if any of your constituents have specific areas of concern about, please let us know and we'll try to see if we can get them up there. Outside of that, we've been very, very busy the last few weeks, but I say that every time I'm up here. A lot, a lot of big events going on. My people are doing a very good job handling what they do and we're still actively recruiting and we kind of mentioned something about this earlier. We're still testing like every three weeks. We tested a couple of weeks ago. Six people showed up. One person passed the preliminary testing process. So very, very tough to fill positions where you don't get people to show up to test. But it's not just me. I talked to Sheriff Baylam yesterday. They got 50 openings in Washington County. It's got 22 in the academy. He's trying to fill the other 26, 28 positions right now and he's struggling to do that. So it's a nationwide event. So if you got your friends, family, relatives and no age limit or specific other than being over 21 that wanna go along for it, send them our direction. I'll say that I'm good. If you got questions?
Any questions for the sheriff? Commissioner Jacobson?
Well, those, thank you, Madam Chair. Well, those two speed, what are those called again? Radar trailers? Will they work in the block grant? Maybe we write up two of those first time, one time.
Yeah, so we just bought two new ones off of some funding from the last year from the county and those happen to be the only two. Should work on like two older ones are incapacitated at the moment, but we're very fortunate. We have a retired solar engineer guy that's one of our VIPs. So he's looking at them and ordered parts to get the other two up and going. So we should have them going here pretty quick. So we were working last year with the City of firmly and the mayor on the city firm was coming playing buying a radar trailer for the city of firmly. So we're still working on that piece of it. Same thing. I'm trying to perhaps get some grant funds. We'll get a couple more. So.
And Madam Chair, if I may, do those collect data?
No.
Is there an app that you can collect that on one of those?
You have to, you'd have to buy a different trailer that's capable of doing that. So if you're talking about recording speed values and stuff for a period of time, the ones we have don't do that.
Yeah, you'd think they would, they could record speed, they could record traffic numbers. I mean, it's too bad that they don't because that could give us some valuable data and maybe times where if we could set one of your officers out there behind a bush, we could maybe make a little jingle on some speeders.
They, in the state of Nevada, you can't, you can't record somebody's license plate stuff that come out of them afterwards.
Well, I'm, yeah, and I'm not saying that. I'm saying, well, if this, if we've got this cars or vehicles coming through here at 7:35 on a regular basis going 85 miles an hour, it might make your efficiency of just busting him if you're out there 10 minutes for that and 10 minutes after that.
Yeah, no, if you're trying to establish a pattern or something, that would work and what were your peak traffic flow times and stuff like that. If we go after a couple of new radar trailers, we talked about going down that path significantly changes the cost.
Oh, I'm sure.
The two that we bought last year were about $10,000 apiece just to tell you to slow down. So that's one of the issues with that.
Thank you.
You said you didn't have any questions.
I didn't, but then Commissioner Jacobson's comments made me thinking about because when we do road counts, traffic counts, the items that the road department has does do account and does do speed.
Right.
Maybe we could coordinate setting them things up together and we wouldn't need any new equipment, but we could get the data that we're looking for.
Well, yeah, the stuff that Mr. Holman has does do that because he did that study on vehemence and determined what the passage car was and all that stuff. And it does the speed. So you might be able to work combined effort out or on a particular street, let's say Hardy Lane and firmly, we set up the road department's road count thing and the radar trailer together. We might go combine the efforts.
I'm just trying to think how we can get the data we need without spending extra money. So that's just something to think about. Just a comment.
Okay, any other comments? Nobody changed their mind? Okay. Thank you, Sheriff. So Ms. Nikki, did you, do you wander in here to come give us a report? Oh, okay. Well, we were under elected officials and I saw you walk in. So. Oh, gotcha. Well, evidently Commissioner Jacobson does have a question.
Thank you, Nikki. I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah.
My timing is not good today.
I gotta, it's perfect for me because now I can answer this question without, I called Mr. Page and asked him and and I'm gonna just check his accuracy here because I trust you a lot more than I trust Mr. Page, just for the record.
Could be one of those days, huh?
Silver and gold on the tax bill. Can you tell me where that money goes? I had some people call me and ask me and I, I know it's, and Mr. Page confirms for seniors programs exactly.
It's really always been there. It's just, it's just on the tax bill specifically now and I'm not sure why Josh is a better answerer for that question.
But where, yeah, we're just where did that money go? I was just.
It's a senior, it's a senior.
So Meals on Wheels, that kind of stuff. Oh.
So Josh walked in just in time for her to jump the track today.
Josh Foley, Lyon County Councilor, I wanna make it clear I'm an appointed official. But in answer to that discussion, that is the Senior Services Fund that Shayla administers takes care of all your senior centers, your Meals on Wheels. She could probably give you a lot more.
Nope, that's, I was just confirming. I just had some calls on it because apparently everybody's getting their taxes right now and that's a.
We were funding it through a, by putting utility license fees and reducing the amount of general funding utility license fees every year. But it was a flat amount. It wasn't growing with any inflation. So she always had to every year come back for a budget request for more money from the general fund. So this year during the budget cycle, the board approved moving tax rate out of the general fund and the medical imaging fund into the silver and gold fund so that she has her own tax rate and she doesn't have to come back and ask for funds every year as the cost increases.
And then the person that contacted me, Mr. Foley, said, you know what? I would rather it said for old people rather than silver and gold because it looks like we're buying stocks of bonds. So, and then he started laughing, but whatever. So.
And that's an idea though.
We can definitely rename the funds to, to call it the Rob Jacob.
No, don't do that. All right, I'm done, Madam Chair. That's a terrible idea, Josh.
Madam Chair, I do wanna make one point doing that issue because I, I too received some phone calls. So the tax rate itself, the total tax rate that comes to the county did not change. We just moved it around, but it was like, well, you've raised taxes to take, no, it's just, we renamed it to find, explain to what Mr. Foley just explained. And they're like, well, my taxes went up. Well, they probably did, but not more than 3%.
Right. And they didn't go up because of that either because the general fund, the general fund amount is exactly the same as it was. There's just, like you said, just moved it around.
Gotcha.
Any others?
Thank you for coming in and being voluntold.
Okay, and you're actually here for the consent agenda, right? Okay, all right. Well, let me finish up the elected officials if there is any others and we'll kind of jump to a couple of things here. Any other elected officials today? Nobody jumping up on Zoom? Okay. All right. Well, with that being said, let's go to the consent agenda and then to put project one on notice, we're gonna jump to you right after. Okay. So consent agenda, Jeff, anything that you know of changes, something to poll?
No, ma'am.
Okay, anything from the board up here? Okay, can I?
Oh, I have motioned. Well, I just won't, before we make a motion to approve, I just wanna thank Shayla and her crew for the grants again. How impressive. And just in reading through those, very little coming out of county coffers and you're bringing in again a bunch. And again, Frank, it's good to hear the sheriff's department going after that grant. So just all those department heads and and crews that are getting, putting in for these grant dollars that come into our county and save our taxpayers. The burden is greatly appreciated. So well done.
Okay, and before I read some stuff and a motion gets done because I kind of jumped real quick. Is there anything that you needed polled or you're just here to hear the vote? Okay, so under the consent agenda, action will be taken on all items. All matters listed on this consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the board of county commissioners with one action and without an extensive hearing. Any member of the board or citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda discussed and acted upon separately during this meeting. I apologize. I usually read that in the beginning. So nothing's being polled, no comment. So I can take that motion now. Commissioner Hawkeye?
A motion to approve the consent agenda items 12A through 16E.
Second.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Brian. And your timing was perfect.
Yes, it was.
Okay, so we're coming back now. All right, we're done with elected. If I'm gonna jump to 19B. Page to the right page here. 19B for possible action, approve a letter to Nevada Department of Transportation Endot supporting the installation of a full movement signal at the intersection of US Highway 50 and Traditions Parkway and authorizing the county manager to sign the letter.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Commissioner Henderson requested this item. As you all know, we've spent several, we've had several workshops in the town hall meetings in the Highway 50 corridor regards to traffic safety. One of the issues that could bother more often than not is the request for traffic safety control devices throughout the Highway 50 corridor, whether it be stoplights, IT intersections, people rifle, whatever. So traditions, this is, this is a first in my career as county manager. I have a developer coming forward saying, please help us pay, please help us make us pay for a traffic signal. So I will turn over to those folks. They can discuss with you what they're finding.
Tell them to write the check. We're going. Please step in.
Oh, good morning.
Good morning.
Members of the commission, Paul Solagi is my name. I'm a traffic engineer on the project one team, working on this traditions development. I've studied this project extensively over the years for decades really. And, and the project one team, the traditions desires to have a traffic, a full movement traffic signal installed at the US 50 Traditions Parkway Sagali intersection. And the developers are willing to fully fund the construction, the design and construction of that signal. The project is moving forward and street connections will be made in the coming weeks that will allow the existing neighborhood back near the Sutro School, elementary school to take access there. And homes are being constructed now and coming online soon. And so the project developer would like to get this signal moving forward. The history of this project is that back in 2007, in a community study, a signal was initially planned for that intersection, the Traditions Parkway intersection. In 2008, we did traffic studies. I did them myself and, and they, the signal was found to be a good traffic engineering solution. And we in fact even designed the signal at that time in 2008. And then the economy changed and things went on hold. They've kind of been idling for a period of time. Since then, I've done subsequent studies in 2017, again in 2019, indicating that the signal was still needed and an appropriate solution for traffic control. Recently, Endot, Mr. Page mentioned how Endot has had a series of meetings and have done a study where they looked at three alternates for that Highway 50 corridor. An arterial solution was among the three options that was considered that did have a signal here at the Traditions Parkway intersection. And in the end, however, they also had a friendly road system plan and then what they called their, their parkway plan, which was their preferred one, which primarily was a group of high Ts and other access. The developers prefer the signalized intersection. We feel that a full movement, a full movement intersection has benefits. We could bring it online the quickest of any of those solutions. The Endot plan would take 10 years and $50 million. And so the likelihood that that, anything could happen in the foreseeable future was, was limited. And so we're promoting this solution. So we feel that the plan has long been in place. We're moving ahead as, as was previously discussed and contemplated. The development is, is building out and we're here and respectfully request that you would support. We'd gone to the Dayton Regional Advisory Committee and we asked for their support and I made a similar brief presentation just while it's on there. And they were supportive of this concept. And so I've come here today. I can show you more detail about the specifics of the plan or however much information you would like about this. But we're here to take your questions now and then to respectfully request your support of this action to allow us to move ahead to start the permitting process to fully fund the signal and then build it as soon as possible. So I would welcome your comments.
Questions, comments?
I'll just, I really appreciate you stepping forward to take some action on a very, what I believe is an important safety aspect for Highway 50. And as, as we said before in the comments, that it is something new to have a developer say, we're gonna help out. We're gonna actually pay for this. I'm not quite sure why the feeder being drug other than they'd like to keep Highway 50 a fast way to get through Dayton and everything, but I believe we're past that. And having traveled across this country, I do know that there's many, many places where highways go through and there's multiple signals to slow traffic down through the congested areas. And I certainly, I certainly support this. You know, I was at that meeting in Dayton, the last one, and the people support it too. So hopefully we can get this pushed through with Endot.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Luffy, thank you very much. Mr. Smith, thank you. I'm a pro. I really am. Now, we all know that we have problems on Highway 50. Okay? Is this particular intersection right now where we have the most problems? Absolutely not. But we're being proactive because we are gonna have an increase in traffic. You know, I've, I've seen the plans that you guys have for traditions. I'm impressed. And, and you're right, the, the other neighborhoods will, once your, once your roadway is connected, will come through there instead of trying to to get through that labyrinth to get out of that neighborhood. So I certainly appreciate this. It is proactive and hopefully this is gonna set the bar for future development along the Highway 50 corridor where we have other developers willing to stand up and and help alleviate the problems before they become a problem. So thank you very much.
Commissioner Jacobson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanna thank you gentlemen for, for being here today and I guess I would just ask. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to thank you gentlemen for for being here today. And I guess I would just ask, having read the letter, this, is that the essence of what you wanted the county to have there? Do you have any input on the letter that we're going to be sending to Christina Swallow, the director for the Nevada Department of Transportation? But and then other than that, obviously, I'd be curious how quickly NDOT lets you move on this, pending approval of everything, obviously. But again, my hat's off to the developer stepping up and doing some traffic, making their development a safer development. As we all know, traditions is a family oriented development and to step up and help out on the Highway 50 and with concerns of the community and board and law enforcement, everybody has, my hat's off to you guys. So thank you very much, sir. Thank you, Madam Chair.
If I could respond, I guess in terms of the content of the letter, we've reviewed the preliminary version of the letter and find that acceptable and it meets the critical items that we are in support of. And as a traffic engineer, you know, so often through my career, I was always working with developers trying to just calculate a participatory share where one person would put a little bit of money towards it. This is pleasant that this is now a plan to fully fund it, although we still have to work through groups within to get it finally approved.
Well, I think I'll just go to public comment at this point and get that one out of the way, if you don't mind. And so do we have anybody for public comment on putting up a signal light in Dayton? Yeah, I don't think we got any, any hands on Zoom, Jeff? Okay, well, I will entertain a motion then.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move that we approve a letter to the Nevada Department of Transportation, supporting the installation of a full movement signal at the intersection of US Highway 50 and Traditions Parkway and authorize the county manager to sign the letter.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Henderson, seconded by Commissioner Jacobson. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. And see, we do care. We didn't make you wait till this afternoon to hear that. You're welcome. Okay. Lots of, oh, there it is. I had my page just folded over. I couldn't, I'm like, I'm looking for it. There it is. Okay, appointed officials. Who's first?
Don't push each other over now.
I know, I'm looking at a table full of them. It's like, okay, who's first? Pharma line, yeah.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Community Development Director. Real quick, I just want to let you know that we did receive a notice of intention to annex a parcel by the city of Fernley. The parcel is APN 021-201-01. I believe this is one of the big great logistics parcels north of the highway. So I can, I know Rob Pizel has a map pulled up, if you want to see it. That's all I wanted to do.
We're all good.
All right.
Okay.
Next. Told you to line up. Come on, this is like public participation. Get in line so we know who we're talking to. Just teasing. Ms. Shayla.
Shayla Holmes, Director of Human Services for the record. I just want to make a note on the grant funding. This year, as a generally a renewal year for a lot of our grants, they're only funding flat funding. So we're really having to fight for those bullet increases for our staff. I just want to let you guys know that we we fight for every penny and every dollar, but we don't always get what we request, but we do plan on that flat flat funding within our budget process, but we always try to get more and not not always successful. So I just want to let you guys know that flat funding, it seems to be coming back now that the state's sort of running out of that CARES and ARPA money and what that's looking like. So that's just something we'll continue to work through. The other thing I want to let you guys know about is 988 has rolled out. You may have seen commercials on that, but that's the three digit behavioral health crisis line and attempts to alleviate 911 and separate what behavioral health crisis versus an emergency situation might be. So that has rolled out. It is functional and operating. The big focus right now is the interoperability between 911 and 988 and how they push those calls back and forth. We did meet at the Behavioral Health Task Force for Lyon County yesterday to discuss the 988 rollout and how we can ensure that our local providers are getting referrals from that 988 process. So we're working on innovations through that, but we know that it's not going to be an ideal behavioral health system for quite some time. Also, along the lines of the 988 conversation and how we make sure our local providers are getting those referrals and we're able to take care of our own local community members in crisis. The Northern Regional Behavioral Health Policy Board will be voting on their BDR this afternoon, one of which that's on there as a recommendation is the amendment to 433C, which would allow enabling language for counties to create their own behavioral health authority as a region. Right now, 433C, it only allows for singular county entities to do that, which isn't really financially feasible. You guys did receive a presentation on that potential at the last Board of Health. And I am working on scheduling the next Board of Health, so I'll keep you guys posted on that. We're hoping for September and then I'll get you a formal report on what Human Services has been doing the last few months. We've really been out in the community and doing a lot of those community events now that they're back in full swing and action. So I'm excited to share with you guys what we've been doing.
Any questions for Shayla?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next.
Facility Director for the record. Oh, you have my report. I don't know if you have any questions. I got the first ARCA project done, the fairgrounds, a little small project there and we're working on about three other ones right now. Some of the other things, the engineering for the asphalt out there, fairgrounds. RFQ for the, I mean, the friendly justice court. What's the other one? Anthony, oh. Oh, I can't dig it even right now. Any, any questions you have?
Any questions for Mr. Holmes? Instead. Next. No. I don't know about Josh. He got called out, but we can always come back to it. So nobody else? Oh. Okey dokey. Well, we will go to advisory board reports. Do we have anybody online, Jeff, from advisory boards? Okay, I just, yeah, sometimes we have one or two, so not seeing any. I'm gonna finally move off that page.
For the last time.
Right. Okay. Uh, 17, planning, 17A for possible action to approve the request for a conditional use permit to allow for the construction of approximately 3,310 linear feet of of overhead 120 kilowatt transmission line segment located outside the 2020 Comprehensive Master Plan Designated Utility Corridors to provide for a connection into the NV Energy's Eagle Substation PLZ 2022-154 APN 021-581-09. And who do we have presenting this one? Is it Mr. Pizel or?
Thank you. For the record, Rob Pizel, Senior Planner. Jeff, do you have the PowerPoint up? If if not, I've got it up and I can screen share.
I believe he has it up. No, I don't. Oh, go ahead and put your PowerPoint up, Rob.
Thank you.
I think he was attempting to.
Thank you. This is a conditional use permit for a power transmission line segment that is located outside of a designated utility corridor. The parcel in question is APN 021-581-09. The parcel is generally located in the western portion of the north property line of Section 32 Township 21 North, Range 25 East, Mount Diablo Basin Meridian. General location is north Duffy Road on the north side of Interstate 80, north of the incorporated town, the city of Fernley. The subject site, as you can see by the light blue line, it butts both Washoe County and Churchill County. The subject parcel in the detail on the left from the assessors maps is approximately 640 acres in size. It's currently vacant and undeveloped. Parcel can be accessed by Truck and Way and Duffy Drive, which provide access to Interstate 80. The subject site itself with regards to topography does have some steeper areas within its boundaries on the eastern portion. However, given the type of development associated with a transmission line, this won't provide any, any issues. It's located within an area that's designated as Exxonshaded in the Fermi theme panel, excuse me, FEMA firm panels with an effective date of January 16th, 2009. Here you can see the overall project of which this conditional use permit deals with a small portion of format. NBLLC is requesting approval of that one segment. Basically, the, it's a new overhead 120 KV transmission line. It provides a connection to a new geothermal power generation plant that is located in Washoe County. Up the, at the top of the page or top of the map on the right, down to the existing NV Energy Eagle Substation, which is located north of Fernley. As you know, state statute requires local jurisdiction to provide an expedited review process for projects that are located within an adopted utility corridor designated in the local master plan. The specific section is NRS 278165 shown on the right. So within Title 15, Chapter 15, 33610 addresses power transmission lines that exceed 60 KV. The 60 KV is the typical voltage standard for local electrical distribution transmission lines, the overhead utility lines you see within throughout the county versus the higher, the ones that exceed 60 KV, which are located within master plant designated utility corridors. And you can see on the right, the specific section, they're permitted in all zoning districts due to the linear nature. And they can be either reviewed through the conditional use permit if they're outside of a designated corridor or the administrative design review process is located within one. So this, the specific section that discusses the additional findings that need to be reviewed when you're looking at a conditional use permit for a transmission line located outside of a designated corridor. They include that it not conflict with any existing or planned infrastructure utility projects. The proximity to the corridor, it tries to avoid any school, hospital or urban residential area with a dwelling density greater than two, two units per acre. And if they are, then the setbacks required under the National Electric Safety Code be utilized and that they be in conformance with the goals and policies of public utilities and services. So again, looking at a little more detail at the overall line segment, the majority are located within existing Lyon County utility corridors shown in black. However, there is a 3,000, 3,310 linear foot segment running east west that is highlighted on the detail on the right in yellow that is outside of an approved corridor. As such, this segment needs to be reviewed through the conditional use permit as described earlier. So it's within that last 2.7 miles of the whole project. It consists of a double 120 KV circuit on a on the steel structures span between the individual towers would be 200 to 400 feet. Heights of the towers would be 70 to 85 feet above ground level. There would be a 90-foot permanent right of way easement secured along with the extra 200 temporary right of way for the construction of the Gentile Line. And on the right hand side, you can see some of the details with regards to the, to the transmission line. Again, this is the type of tower structure they're looking at. Basically, an H, H-frame, three pole structure with the details on the right, including on the far right, the amount of right of way permanent and temporary for the construction and then maintenance of the transmission line. The staff report goes through the findings, first one again, consistent with the general purpose and intent of the applicable zoning regulations. The surrounding parcels, the parcel itself is currently zoned RR5. Surrounding parcels located within Lyon County are also zoned RR5. As you can see, the parcel immediately to the east are within Churchill County. And then to the north are Washoe County and then parcels to the south without zoning on the details are located within the city of Fernley's corporate boundaries. Again, utilizing the zoning consistency matrix for properties that are zoned RR5, you utilize the RR20 land use and development standards in Title 15. And within Table 15, 320-1, which is the allowable uses for rural residential, mixed-use, commercial and agricultural resource zoning districts. Power transmission lines are either a conditional use permit or a permitted use, again, depending on whether or not the structure is located within the, within a designated corridor. And based on the materials included in the application, the facility itself would be compatible with the existing uses and planned uses within this area. B, not cause an adverse visual impact to the surrounding area. Again, the properties of the north, south, east and west of the subject site, with the sole exception of aggregate pit operation in Churchill County or vacant and undeveloped. We would note that there are existing overhead transmission lines located to the east and west of the segment under consideration. And for the application materials, the proposed Gentile Line construction maintenance road would be conducted on existing roads that are currently run parallel to the proposed alignments of the Gentile Line. Not be detrimental to the use peaceful enjoyment, economic value, development of surrounding properties or the general neighborhood compatible with the character and integrity of adjacent development and neighborhoods are included improvements or modification, either onsite or within the public right of way that address those issues. Again, looking at the existing surrounding parcels, this project would not be detrimental, would mitigate and the only activity post-construction would be ongoing maintenance or repair of the line itself. So we feel that finding can be met. D, proposed use not be detrimental to the public health, safety, welfare, convenience. We have included, can recommend a conditions of approval that should address those concerns. Finding E, not result in material damage or prejudice to other properties in the area. Again, in light of the existing uses on the adjacent properties, including existing transmission lines, we were unable to identify areas of concern of substance. And then under the additional criteria listed in Chapter 15, 33610, not conflict with any existing or planned infrastructure utility projects. Again, this project is not in conflict with any known existing or planned infrastructure or utility project. The second one is proximity to any school, hospital or urban residential. As you can see from the details included in the presentation and the staff report, it's, it's located within an area without schools, hospitals or urban residential densities. And the 90-foot wide right of way would be in compliance with the NESC standards. And finally, in conformance with the goals and policies of the master plan for util, public services, public utilities and services. Again, staff is able to list a number of goals, one goal and a number of policies that this project would be in conformance with. So with that, I'll try to answer any questions. I'll try to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Pizel? You do? Oh, no.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Pizel. Just a couple of questions. So in looking through this, this is located inside the city of Fernley, correct?
No, actually, it, this segment is located outside of the city of Fernley.
So I guess that's what I was thinking, but I was confused when you said the city of Fernley. Develop, the something zone was in there, the.
Let, let me, let me clarify. What, when I show the zoning map, the surrounding parcels to the project site itself are also located within line county. They have not been annexed into the, into the corporate boundaries of the city of Fernley. Those parcels that you saw without a zoning designation on them, those were either located in Washoe County to the north Churchill County to the east of this parcel or the city of Fernley.
Okay, and so it's not going to interfere with any future development that they may have planned for that land. So because they don't own it. So that answered that. And then is do we, is this a source of revenue at all for the county having that power line go through, or is that just?
I, I don't know if it's a, if it's a source of revenue with regards to any, any franchise agreements. What I will tell you and, and the community development director in his previous experience with economic development will tell you is when companies are looking to locate in Nevada. One of the top two things that they're looking for is a, a source of power and a readily available source of power. So this, this expansion of a, of a new transmission line would provide power to not only the trick project, but also to the proposed development. Industrial development that is going to be located in, in Fernley. Both Mr. Gilman's projects and then the Victory Logistics Projects. And will also help to economic development occur within the northern Nevada industrial. This located within the, within line county. So it, it'll provide power that will entice additional companies to relocate into this area. Both within the city of Fernley and in line county.
Right on. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, um, can I get a motion?
With that, I'll make a motion. No, sorry. Go ahead, Commissioner Henderson.
I just gonna say I make a motion to approve seven, item seventeen A as written.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Hawkeye, seconded by Commissioner Jacobson. And I'm going to go to public comment. Anybody online for public comment? I'm not seeing any hands. Anybody in chambers? I'm not seeing any. I did see somebody wander around the room. We're good. Okay.
Just a point of clarification.
Okay, Commissioner Henderson.
Just want to understand that the motion is to approve based on the findings and subject to the conditions as listed.
Oh, thank you. I actually wrote myself a note to make sure we include them and forgot to say. All right. I need to go for a walk or something, wake up. Stronger coffee. Okay, so we have a motion to second to approve with the findings. A through E and conditions one through seven. With a second, all in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, seventeen B for possible action to approve a request for a two-year extension of time until October fourth, twenty twenty-four. To file the final subdivision map or first in a series of final maps for the mixed use portion of the Woodbridge Estates Plan Unit Development PUD approved October fourth, two thousand eighteen. APNs zero one six dash zero two five dash zero three. And zero one six dash zero two five dash zero four. PLZ twenty twenty-two dash one six eight. That's why you were walking around the room. You were getting ready.
It is. Thank you, Madam Chair. Lewis Carriola, Senior Planner, presenting. Just to summarize the request. This is a request for a two-year extension to an existing approval for tentative map. In the Woodbridge Estates Plan Unit Development, the mixed use portion only. It did include a map in the staff report that highlights the area proposed for single-family development within the mixed use portion. As well as a vicinity map on the left there, you'll see within the Mark Twain community of Dayton. South, south, southeast highway fifty, approximately across from Mark Twain Avenue. Some of the background information is summarized here for the presentation, but most notably on October four, twenty eighteen. Tentative subdivision map for ninety-one single-family residential lots within that mixed use portion of the, the PUD was approved. With a standard condition of approval being number one. Quoting a four-year requirement to record the first final map, if it's a series of maps, but to record the first final map. With the option of a recommendation by the Community Development Director to the Board of Commissioners for a one-time, two-year extension. In that ca- in this case, that would then be two years to October four, twenty twenty-four. The applicants did include two justifications for their request. I highlighted some of the, the most important information, most notably number one, which is the NDOT Commission's operational study for US Highway Fifty. The applicant submitted as would have been required for tentative map. And traffic impact assessment at the time of approval. But it's now undergoing revision. Headway transportation, we specialize in traffic studies is currently in the process of, of putting that report together so that they can then coordinate with NDOT. To, to have updated traffic counts. The second item that they listed as justification involved line counties. Inability for some time in coordination with the state to approve tentative maps based on super capacity issues. But I think the first item is, is the more important justification. And as a result, staff is able to recommend approval of the extension for time to October four, twenty twenty-four to record the final. Available for any questions?
Maybe we should take note to developers. Don't blame the county you're asking a favor from. We'll just go with the first one.
Fair enough.
Any, any questions? Can I get a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the request for a two-year extension of time until October fourth, twenty twenty-four. The final subdivision map for our first in a series of final maps in the mixed use portion of the Woodbridge Estates Planning, Plans Unit Development.
All right, so I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion up here? I'm going to go to public comment. Any public comment on this item? See, everybody in the front row here is sleeping. So look, what do we have online? It's one of those days today, Jeff. The base yawning. Okay, seeing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Good job. Okay, that ends the planning. Going to go to eighteen A for possible action. Accept the resignation from Michelle Scott from the Central Lion County Parks Advisory Board.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the resignation of Michelle Scott from the Central Lion County Parks Advisory Board.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Jacobson, seconded by Commissioner Henderson. Any further discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, nineteen A for possible action to discuss and provide direction to the county manager in regards to developing a bill draft resolution BDR for the twenty twenty-three legislature. Which may include discussion on possible topics for the BDR. Direction to staff to research and come back with information related to a possible BDR. And input from the public on possible topics for a BDR. The board may direct staff to prepare a resolution and bring back to the board for further consideration. Jeff, I really think you could have shortened that.
No, that's illegal. Jeff Page came out of record. So we, we, the board has already given direction on one particular item. This will be the last time it will be on the agenda. The next meeting will be a resolution unless the board changes something this time. To address Commissioner Henderson's idea on changing the law to allow the border county commissioners to point replacements versus the government. If there was something else, so the commission comes to debate back and forth. Fight, not fight. If not, then I will be bringing a resolution at the next board meeting to address the already discussed, a change to the statute. So it was just from the board had opportunity, they had anything else they wanted to discuss.
Just, just on that, I am still working with NACO on that. I, I still think this is a bill NACO should bring because it affects all the counties. They, they're, unfortunately, our next meeting is before their final legislative committee meeting. So we may do some tentative fashion when, when it comes time to that to vote to submit it if NACO doesn't carry it. Like I said, we're still working with, with NACO. To see if, if they will carry the bill, but regardless, I think this is, I don't need to be addressed.
So we need to, I need to have this to LCB, the first part of September pursuant to their rule. And I will tell you some of the concerns I've heard in regards to this bill is that if it goes, it becomes a BDR where it's ours or NACO's, and they actually act on it, is the legislature going to then say? Fine, we'll give you this counties, but in exchange, when you have a missing assembly person or missing senator, we get to appoint that. But that, that is one of the, that unintended consequences potentially could have occurred legislation. There's a lot of unintended consequences. One of many.
And, and to, to that, Mr. Page, legislature can do that on their own anyway.
Correct.
So.
Just, just so you know that that was a concern of mine.
Yeah, because if we ever, don't bring a bill because of possible unintended consequences. We never bring any bills. Because once they get legislators' hands, anything can happen. Trust me. Been there, done that, watched it, cried about it.
So if that, there's nothing, then we'll, we'll move forward with that.
Yeah, my, and my only comment is, yeah, NACO is really only settled on three. I mean, this is an unusual year, you know, they, they usually have more than they're allowed. And they've only settled on three. So we've, we've got two BDR setting there with NACO that needs to be decided.
We have enough laws, just go through the section of approving the budget.
Good luck with that.
I would love to do that. Anyway, anyways. All right, anything else, Jeff?
No, ma'am.
Anything from the board on that?
Well, job justification, Mr. Page. How would they justify their job if they're not approving stuff?
They could spend a little more time working on the budget, actually come up with something that works versus dedicating her time to determine that the state rock is going to be granted or whatever.
Or how about a few BDRs removing some laws?
Yeah, there we go.
Yeah. Just want it backwards.
As Mark Twain said, the most dangerous time in Nevada is in the legislature's session.
That's true. Okay, I think I have finished that page out. All my little hash marks there. And we pulled that one. I'm just making sure I didn't miss anything. Check it on my little hash marks here. So it looks like we should be moving to nineteen C. Is that correct? Does everybody agree with me?
Yep.
Okay. Hey, more, you know, extra sets of eyes are good. All right, for possible action, approve the revised Citizen Advisory Board application letter and handbook.
Madam Chair, Jeff Page came out for the record. This is before you today, based upon numerous conversations with the board and prior actions, I'm cleaning up some processes, cleaning up the application to add, take away some things, deal with the revisions that were required in the handbook based upon past actions of the board. So here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Jeff? You're getting off easy. Do you need us to take action? I was gonna say, you actually need us to take action?
Yeah.
Okay. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion to approve the revised Citizen Advisory Board application letter and handbook.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Hawkeye, seconded by Commissioner Henderson. Do I have any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I have a motion and second. No further discussion. All in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, if I may, Mr. Page and Ms. Lopez, I want to thank you guys both very much. Citizens Advisory Boards are, are important to, at least me, and I think they are my fellow commissioners as well. I still want to speak for them. I appreciate all the work you guys put into to make sure we have functioning, efficient citizen advisory board. So thank you very much.
I'm sure we all say ditto.
Yeah.
Got you to smile. All right, for possible action, direct the county manager to investigate the feasibility, cost options and ability to build a full-service hospital. Excuse me, within central Lion County. Sorry, what is your focus? Apologize.
So Commissioner Keller had requested this item after a serious conversation over the last year and a half to two years about potential hospitals being put into central line county area and us helping guide that conversation so that we could take a look at it. So I've already received an extensive amount of negative feedback from the very north end of the county where Commissioner Jacobson lives, was what about us? So if you read NRS two forty-four, the board of county commissioners are obligated to look at providing healthcare to the unincorporated areas of line. We don't get a lot of say into what happens in the city of Arlington and or the city of Fernley. So that's why we're addressing the central line county corridor and not the city of Fernley. I want to get that out. So what we're looking for here is, and no, this is not the county manager trying to become a new hospital administrator. We do not want.
We don't want to do that.
We do not want to own a hospital facility. This is, is it feasible? If we are going to do it, we're in central line county where it be, we're going to have to work with a number of stakeholders, including a Silver Stage, Silver Spring Hospital Board, Central Line County Fire, private providers, they come back to the board and report as to what this looks like. And I realize what I'm about to say will set some people off, but the World Health Organization sets the standard that we should have free hospital beds per thousand population. So based upon that number of us rounding up, you have about sixty thousand population in the county, we should have a hundred eighty hospital beds. That doesn't include nursing beds or home, or long-term care beds. So at South Line, I think we have fourteen or maybe sixteen acute care beds. So we're a long ways off from a hundred eighty beds. One of the reasons we're looking at this is if you don't know it, both North Line County Fire and Central Line County Fire spent a minimum of an hour transport to and from a hospital. More than likely two hours just to go to Carson Tahoe to, to drive there, get the patient in the ER if you can. Or if they're not critical, wait in line for your patient to have a bed available in the ER. And so by having a, a hospital, an acute care hospital in the central line county corridor, we are able to address some of those EMS needs. Now, the downside to that from my own personal experiences, once you have a hospital in your jurisdiction, it is not going to be a Carson Tahoe, a Renown, or a St. Mary's or Northern Medical Center. So those patients who are critical, have critical issues, that hospital is going to wind up having to transfer those patients to advanced level of care. So you're going to see some difficulties with that Carson Tahoe, who they've done a wide variety. They do heart surgery, they do all kinds of stuff. They still transfer people to Renown. Renown still transfers people to Sacramento. It, it, University Medical Center still transfers people to Los Angeles or Phoenix, depending on the level of coverage required. So it's not an end-all, be-all, but it's a beginning to take a look at something similar to what Douglas County did with Carson Valley Medical Center. What other communities around this are. If, if we want to provide a better quality of life or citizenry, having a, a acute care facility and possibly with on long-term care capabilities, that, that is the model that works well and ruled with that. It's what keeps rural Nevada hospitals open is X number of acute care beds and forty long-term care beds, right? It's now grandma and grandpa, or as I get older, my wife's already got panned out when I'm going to long-term care. So that she can go do the thing she wants to do. But now you, you, instead of having those people living in Carson or Reno, family. living in Carson or Reno, family that lives in Lyon County can go, go see their loved ones at much closer. So we have, there is zero, zero plan of where it would be and what it would look like. I'm just asking for direction to move forward, to begin the discussion of what we can do for an acute care facility somewhere in the Central Lyon County. It may include City of South Lyon Medical Center and Silver Springs Hospital District and combining districts to assist with the capital side of it. It may include working with a number of private providers like Banner or Northern Nevada Medical Center, or the folks that just built the new, or, or folks like that, just built the new Northern Nevada Medical Center. We don't know what it looks like without having some investigation, and I didn't want to go out after talking with Commissioner Keller. I didn't want to go out and just start doing something, and then all of a sudden, you guys are calling me going, why are we getting a hospital?
Well, just to add on to that, I, like you said, we've been talking for quite some time. You know, I mean, it's, it's always been like on the want list, we would love to have a hospital somewhere in Lyon County. And I know everybody would love to have one in their community, that's not going to happen. So I started doing some investigation myself over the last couple of years. And, and it can go so many different directions. It's, it's not a matter that it's going to be the county that pays for it, it's not a matter that it's going to be a private, or it could be, you know, I've heard all these things thrown at me. But I think out of everything I've looked at, and after COVID and, and what we dealt with in that two years, we, I know it's still out there, but the, the first two years, okay? I, I think it's time that we get serious and, and look at the feasibility of serving all of Lyon County, including Fernley, and we might build in Fernley, but it would be, it would be available to serve all of Lyon County, and maybe even beyond that. I mean, so I'm hoping that you guys will back me up on this to, to give some direction to Mr. Page over here. I wanted to give direction to staff to Mr. Page, but he won't let me do that. You know, to start pulling together some of the information that, you know, I've, I've even looked into, but I, as one can commissioner, can't make those decisions. Unfortunately, I'm not the queen, I try to be.
Fortunately.
And, and so he could bring something back to us and, and what is feasible.
The last thing I want to say before there's a motion made is that, so I have also, I announced to the South Lyon Medical Center, well, maybe back. So from nineteen forties, fifties, we had a hospital in Yerington, actually we had several hospitals in Yerington. Doctors' offices were considered hospitals, so Dr. Mary delivered my father. When my, he was born, she spent, my grandmother spent several nights at Dr. Mary's office. And at six o'clock at night, when Dr. Mary went home, there was nobody there, and that's what hospital care was.
Different time.
But with, when Anaconda came to town, things changed. And, and the, the county at the time, and you've got to remember, this is in the fifties, so the population of Lyon County was much different than it is today. The more the population was here. And so the county worked with people and they built an anaconda to build a hospital. And it was a county-run hospital for, for a good number of years, called the, the Lyon Health Center. And so Silver Springs, Fernley, and Dayton, to transport patients to Lyon Health Center. That then changed in about the eighties, nineties, when the hospital was having financial problems, it was going to shut down. They changed the model, they created the South Lyon Medical Center Hospital District, which is Mason Valley, Smith Valley, they get about fifteen cents? Tax rate? No, South Lyon Medical Center. Yeah, fifteen and a half cents of tax rate.
Scary, you know that.
And it services the south end of the county. They will still take patients from other portions of the county, but it services. And then they, they created initially, St. Mary's came in and ran the hospital, and they stepped away. And so SLMC Inc. came on board. So you have, now you have two operating boards for hospital. The one that's elected by the voters to take care of the capital side of the building. And then the, the hospital board operates the operations of the hospital. So we did inform them last week when we went to their annual meeting that we are, this will be on the agenda, because I don't want any hidden surprises, I don't want people, right? And so they're aware of what we're trying to do. There are some downsides that this sort of happened for them, so they're very interested in how we do this and working with, working with us to provide, whether it's them or somebody else, provide some type of hospital facility in the Central Lyon County corridor. But, and coming to us with their history of, here's what we did that didn't work, so maybe you want to stay away from that. So that's, we've had those conversations, I will be, I will see if I can get on the agenda for the Silver Springs Hospital or their next meeting to discuss with them what, what the board does based upon what they do today.
Any questions?
I just can say that, you know, we've spent over a million dollars on ambulances because we are wearing them out very quickly with the long drives, plus the fact that the ambulances are out of service on their ride to Carson and, and taking care of patients. But it would be nice if there was a short stop in the middle where we can get the patients' care and get the ambulance back on the road.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I have no problem with investigating the possibility of a hospital. I do not want the county to be in the hospital business at, at all. But that doesn't mean we can't facilitate getting a hospital here, because there is a need in Central Lyon County, with, without a doubt, for the reasons that Commissioner Hockaday said, plus others, just for quality of life, you know. You have a medical emergency, definitely want, don't want to have to go all the way to Carson or, or Reno, so I'm, I'm, I'm fully supportive of this.
Yeah, and my intent, talking to Jeff the last couple of years and all of my investigation, nowhere in that did I want the Board of County Commissioners to run a hospital. I don't think that would go over really well. Or, or Jeff, you know, that's not our expertise, obviously. But there is a, a lot of ones out there that I've identified now in my investigations. And in fact, you know, I thought there was only a couple that might be interested in our area, and there, there's, you know, a good handful. And, you know, the same ones that are operating up in Humboldt. And, you know, we've got Banner, and, and we've got, was it UHC or something like, anyways, the one that just built in, in Reno. There's quite a few different ones around. So, yeah, we don't want to be in the hospital business. It's just a matter of Jeff and staff figuring out, okay, how, how do we get there and we let somebody else be in control? But I think we're, we're overdue for this conversation, because as, you know, if we say, yes, Jeff, go, go find out all the answers today, we're not going to have a hospital tomorrow. So we got to start the ball somewhere rolling.
And given the fact that our population is going to continue to increase.
Yeah, it's.
The, the need is going to increase.
The need's going to get worse, not better.
As far as I know, there's only one true county-owned hospital left in the state, that's University Medical Center in Las Vegas. The rest of them have kind of followed suit to what South Lyon's done, or, or others. I remember the days of transporting patients to Washoe Medical Center, it was called Washoe Medical Center because it was owned by the county. It is now Renown, the county doesn't have, doesn't operate that hospital anymore. Mainly because, and I don't mean just to come across poorly, but county government generally doesn't manage hospitals well. And it's better to have the private sector or folks that understand how to run hospitals to, to the county, so that's.
And Clark County could get rid of their one last remaining one, they would.
Well, that's why I just bring it up for the public, information that we're not interested in becoming the Board of County Commissioners overseeing a hospital, but we do need to do something about medical care within the Central Lyon County. And I'm not opposed, before you asked the question, I'm not opposed to inviting a city firm into the conversations and seeing if we can help support them as well, getting something, or North Lyon Fire, they're poor guys, they, they're constantly on the road between Reno and Fallon on a regular basis. So I, I'm not opposed to assisting or working with them to see if we can do something similar for Fernley as well.
Well, and, and like I said earlier, you know, we may not be able to build one everywhere, but if we could get one centralized, you know, it, it would benefit Fernley as well. I mean, Highway fifty's a lot closer to Fernley than them going all the way into Reno.
And the traffic's a lot better, so absolutely, I'm not, I totally understand.
Commissioner Jacobson, did you have any other questions? Okay. With that being said, can I entertain a motion? Would you like me to make the, no.
You, you question, if you want to. Madam, Madam Chair, I move that we direct the county manager to investigate the feasibility of a full-service hospital in Central Lyon County and to coordinate with Silver Springs Hospital District, private providers, fire EMS, and others as identified, including the city of Fernley, on the city, on the feasibility of an acute care hospital in Central Lyon County.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Henderson, a second by Commissioner Hockaday. Any further discussion, any public comment? Okay, Randy, step up and state your name for the record.
My, my name is also, why is it? My name is Randall Green of the Silver Springs. And Churchill County has a, a hospital there, and it's rural hospital. And I don't know all the problems they have or, or don't have, but it's something to investigate. And I know that there's a lot of population in that and around, you know, it's a spread out county, but the most, it's very concentrated in Churchill County where Fallon, where, you know, Fallon is. And so it doesn't fit Lyon County, but it does work in Churchill County, but it's something to investigate.
We'll look at every option, thank you, Randy. Any other public comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you, gentlemen. God, we're so close to him, but I need a quick break at least. Do we have a closed session today, Jeff? No? So, so we can do a quick break, come back, finish up, and then go to lunch?
Awesome.
Oh, thank you. I didn't know how long.
I notice you go back and forth, you gotta get your check and go.
I know, right? I'll say this, I know, I'm a little nervous, not, not going nervous, I don't know. I know, right? I know, my chair. Sounds a little bit, it's good.
I've been pretty well. Calling you.
I
I
I
I
I
I
Okay, we're gonna go to item 20A for possible action. Approve the fee resolution for all Lion County departments effective August 15, 2022. Mr. Foley, I knew at some point you were gonna have to get up there.
Yes. Joshua, Lion County Council. So the nice thing is, is there are only two pages on here that we have to go to to discuss. And in your packet, page 363 is, is the one, we only have a handful of recommended changes. Some of them aren't technically changes, some of them are really just clarifications. As an example, under the building department fees, we have electrical service, 400 amps or more. And it said fee based on valuation, we're just making sure it's clear it's evaluation in exhibit B. And so that's, some of these things are just clarifications that way. When we went down, the next one would be a permanent extension fee, where if a permit's not expired for more than 15 days, they can just renew the existing permit for $80 instead of making them go back through and pay for a new permit. So it's to their benefit to do that. The item, it's now item eight, was item number seven, manufactured home set permit. On that one, we had in your packet, it's proposed to be changed to a fee valuation. We're recommending to the board at this point until we do some further research for next year's fee resolution. And we just leave that one as is, as the flat $500. So that's, that's one where we don't want to change it. Then the mobile home permit extension fee one time, we're removing that. We're changing the temporary certificate of occupancy from $100 to $500 because it does take us enough staff time to process those. Those are actually probably more of an expense than that sometimes, but that's the recommendation. Mass grading permit, we're required under, under state law and under the county code to have that. So we're adding that and doing a valuation based on our exhibit B, the building permit fees. So that's all for the building permit. Then under the cemetery fees, I did an analysis, and this is the first time they've actually appeared in the fee resolution, they've always been just adopted separately. And when I did the analysis, we're doing, we're paying in hard costs for just maintenance of the cemeteries over 300% what we're generating. So basically, the proposal is to increase the fees to $1,500 per burial plot and $450 for cremation plots in the county. And having a uniform across all cemeteries in the county. That does not include, the analysis does not include any cost for staff time. So if staff goes out and does maintenance in a cemetery and fuel for any deeds that are drawn up or processing of requests for purchases, we didn't even factor that in, our hard costs are three times what we're generating without even factoring those. So that's why the recommendation there. And then on the last recommendation, which is on page 366, we are getting requests on the GIS side for shape files for the outlines of the fire districts to show what fire districts there are. And so we're just making that the same as all other tax districts, which would be a $30 charge if someone requests that. So those are the only changes to it. We did do a business impact statement for the building fees as we felt we were required to under law and receive no comments. Sorry.
Question for Josh.
We have one clarification on the cemetery fees I didn't include, and we need to include it. We currently do not charge for military veterans or plots for them. I just need to put a little footnote in there saying military veterans are not charged for.
So that'll remain the same?
That'll remain what existing charges, yes.
Okay, Commissioner Hockaday, did you?
First, you know, you've always got to say no. I got you this thing at the conference that says the answer is no. You can just stick that on your main plate. Read it.
That's perfect for Josh.
As I said, yeah. Not say no. We all know ahead of time what it's gonna be, however. Having said that, I do have, as far as I'm concerned, unacceptable on the plots, burial plots, you know, Smith Valley, we're going from $300 to $1,500, a five-fold increase, when in fact, Smith Valley, Hillcrest Cemeteries, we do two peanuts a year. There is a significant amount of free labor with John Merrill Abbot, John's out there all the time. I know that we had some significant improvements made, you know, this last couple of months. But that's an exception. I do believe that we're way, way out of line here with Smith Valley. Certainly, the northern tier of the county land is more at a premium. We have plenty of land available in the Hillcrest, and I would just like to make sure that we don't go overboard like this. From $300 to $1,500. The cemetery board down there, we did in fact discuss this for the last year. And I pretty much said, yeah, we can go up by $600, but from 300 to 1,500 is, I think, a little bit outrageous across the board. I, I, I can't, I can't accept that. That's my comment.
Okay, Commissioner Henderson, did you have anything?
What, yeah, I actually. How did you arrive at those figures, on the cemetery plots, just on the cost of the counties incurring and maintaining them?
Yeah, so what I did, and I brought the sheet in with me, it's in my office with the packet. What I did is I went through and took the cemeteries and I took the revenues that we're receiving for the cemeteries. I took the costs that we're spending, the hard costs that we're spending on the cemeteries for weeds, spraying, all the different costs, water, all those costs, and put it in to a spreadsheet, compared those, and did an average over the past, I think it was six years worth of costs, and took a look at it and said, we're spending approximately 300% of what we're generating. I can do it by cemetery as well, I have that information. But it came out very similar when I went cemetery by cemetery with that. So I realized we're not in a profit mode on the cemeteries by any stretch of the imagination. So what I did is I put together a very conservative estimate of what the costs are and what the fees would be if you're trying to just cover hard costs, let alone any staff time, any fuel, any of those processing costs that we do incur.
Yeah, that, that is a substantial increase.
Yes, they have been increased in well over 20 years, if not well over 30. So percentage-wise increase, absolutely correct. It is a huge increase, 300%, almost approximately 500% in case it's Smith Valley.
Yeah.
That was the methodology. The board, of course, has the authority to operate those at a discount if you choose to. Or you can take a look at, even these rates are offering it at a discount to what the cost of the county. And we do get significant amount of volunteer labor, not just in Smith Valley, although we do appreciate the Smith Valley labor, they take care of a lot of the work. But City of Urrington cleans up this Valley View Cemetery. We get community groups to come into the other cemeteries throughout the county. So it is definitely something that is, is a community.
But I, I do like the moving to one fee for all the cemeteries in the county.
Jeff, can I stop you just for a second? Commissioner Jacobson, I've been trying to get a question in there. And I've got a feeling it probably has to do with the same thing.
Well, I, I hear you on the 1,500 increase from 300. 300 seems very, very minimal. And my question was gonna be, when's the last time we actually increased the fee in over 20 years? That's, that, that's seemed like a long time. So while I do understand that, that pill to swallow going from 300 to 1,500 is a tough one. I guess if we were to compare it to other cemeteries, and I didn't do that, but I'm guessing 1,500 is still on the, on the light side for, for some of that. So that, that's, that's, I'm sure, gonna go over not as well in Smith Valley as would for me to say what I just said. So that's a toughie. My other question was, I'm just gonna use an example of buddy of mine that built a home. He had to wait six months just to get windows. And this fee schedule and this, and these late fees, do we have a way to account for that? I know that we, as a county, have experienced shortages on COVID, because everyone can blame COVID, but COVID-related delays and cost overruns or whatever, ordering and not having it on hand. Is there something built into here that, on that fee schedule, that if it's out of their control and they can, I'm not trying to create more work for the county staff as everyone rolls their eyes, but is there a system in place that doesn't necessarily penalize people for matters out of their hands if they've ordered it and it's backordered and backordered and backordered? As far as late fees go on some of this stuff, I don't know.
Andrew Haskin, Lion County Community Development Director. We don't have a process currently to account for matters that are out of their control because it would be really difficult to track that.
I got you, I just was throwing it out there, if you had talked about it at all, or. So I get it, that's all I had. Bye.
Jeff Page, County Manager. So a couple of things, one, I'll address your question first. So in the city of Fernley, they charge fees for things that we don't necessarily charge fees for, or they require building permits for things that we don't necessarily require building permits for.
I know.
As an example, some communities require a building permit for flat work concrete. We don't. You can pour your patio, we're not gonna come out and try to do inspection. So that's kind of, it's kind of hard to compare apples to apples when you have that. So I, from the perspective of the cemetery, what do the board decide they want to do with the amount of the fee? I'm telling you that what we're doing right now with Smith Light paying 300, everybody else paying 500 is wrong. We own the cemeteries, they're ours, I've tried to sell them. Statute's very clear, I can sell them to somebody who wants to manage a cemetery. I can sell them to a group who wants to manage a cemetery. I can't sell them to funeral homes. The only people who are interested in cemeteries are funeral homes. And so regardless of what the board does, I just strongly suggest that as you move forward, if you change that fee, that it's universal countywide. Because then it becomes, I gotta tell you, I'm not that cheap, but I know people that are. Well, I live in Dayton, I'm gonna bury my loved, loved ones in Smith Light because it's 300 bucks versus 500 bucks. And that is not, I don't think that's the intent that we want. We want people who live in their community to be able to go visit their deceased loved ones in the cemetery that's closer to them. So that's part of it. The other part of it is, we're providing as, as many resources to one cemetery as the other, and the cemetery is charging less than this cemetery. So I think we need to make that uniform across the board as far as the amount of. As far as the amount of the fee, that's a target for the board.
So question, so we're not allowed to sell the funeral homes. So that's your next BDR, right?
Well, so I, I did years ago, back, back in the days of. When we had the county engineer here, or the engineer here, Dick Faber, we looked into it and, and the LCB indicated that. The research they had done for us, I mean, they spent like six months looking this up for us. That, that was a BDR we actually looked at. And the reason they didn't want to do it is those private cemeteries that exist now that used to be public cemetery, specifically in Reno and Las Vegas. Those fees were astronomical. And what, when they went from. Public cemetery to a private cemetery. So now you have a funeral home that, I mean, I'm not here to bag on funeral homes, but I used to work for a funeral home guy. And I knew what these, in the days of these to charge for, we used to pay for a casket from the company and then we charged you to, to have said casket. You're spending a lot of money to, to deal with a, a decedent. And now if it goes to a funeral home to run the, run the cemetery, those fees go up as well. And so we're trying not to make it in the situation where it's a money making issue that we at least could come close to breaking even, even on our costs, not necessarily personal costs, but. Hard costs so that we can continue to provide service. Cause I'm the guy or am, or Doug's the guy. That when people come in and complaining about the weeds or whatever else is going on the cemetery, I always want to tell them. Read your deed, be responsible for your grave site, and you only paid back then. For your, some of these family plots were getting complained about are 80, 90 years old. You only paid $25 back in 1932. So. We just wanted, want to be fair across the board and be able to help recoup some of our costs for the stuff that we provide. We're still working with the city of Urrington on taking over the cemetery out here. They have provided a guide on a regular basis to deal with weeds and a few other issues. So we're very fortunate there that our staff isn't having to do it on a regular basis. But when you've got Silver Springs, Dayton, Silver City, Smith Valley. The. Missouri Flats. We have more. If you look at the, the, the report Doug gave you, those counties have one cemetery. Alright, so it's a little bit different situation again. Our, our logistics are a little more challenging. Than the rest of the counties when it comes to dealing with some of these cemeteries. There are, like, for example, in Elkhorn County, there are a number of other cemeteries, but the county doesn't maintain their own. That's right.
Thoughts, questions? Yeah, I'm thinking, reading and.
Yeah, just a, a, a quick look. So on, on my phone. Says, single plot and private cemeteries average 2,000 to 5,000, sometimes much higher urban areas. States, you know, color. Yeah, actually, I'm doing a little bit of the, the, the cost, the recommended. These aren't out of line. It's just a huge jump. This has given me remorse or buyer's remorse.
So. Josh, Jeff. I think the $1,500, I mean, cause I kind of looked it up before we got here today, is not out of line. I understand the, the difference, you know, between Smith and the rest of the county. You know, it's a bigger jump for them because of that. Can we look at maybe doing this in like two increments where we raise it? Now partially and then turn around. And within a year and, and raise it on up to the 1,500.
So I will guarantee you this from my perspective. If the board decides to do something different with the fee this year, I will be back next year asking for it. The challenge has been, just like with utilities stuff, just like with tax increases, right? The county government, city government does not like to talk about raising fees. So we go years without raising fees because the elected board's like, ah, I don't want, and then we get into crisis mode. And we, we jack everything up six to 20%.
We know we've dealt with that with Dayton sewer and everything else.
So my recommendation is the board.
Have to do it all at once.
The board's going to lower that fee, then I can guarantee you that I'll be coming back next year for another increase in the fee.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just playing devil's advocate here. When can you buy a cemetery plot? Could I buy one right now and knowing that I'm going to pass away? So if we pass this. If we drag our feet on passing this, we're going to probably get a bunch of people purchasing a $300 lot. And maybe. I, I, that would be. I guess what I would do for my loved ones is say, well, I look at this, I saved you 1,200 bucks when you kicked dirt over the top me. I don't, I don't know what the answer is here, but it just seems like if. We drag our feet on this. Place is going to fill up.
Mr. Holmes can testify that it's better than I can, but I can tell you from personal experience. There are a number of plots that are purchased, at least in the Urrington Cemetery, that have been purchased by family members. And my family is a prime example. There's room for, I don't know, depending whether we get cremated or we're in a casket, there's room for four to six of us. We have already, already paid for it at whatever price my grandfather paid for way back when. So that does happen. I mean, it's not as, as big of an issue as. As you may think, but that, that does happen.
Well, I think it's gonna happen.
I don't know if we're gonna have a rush. Well, the county, the county's got a sale on cemetery. For $999, I, I don't know that, that that's going to occur. But our biggest thing is getting it so we're at least recouping some of our costs and then making it fair enough across the county for each of the cemeteries.
Well, I'm looking at that date, August 15th. I was thinking to myself, they're going to jump from 500 to 1,500. I might, you know, have to go buy a couple and set off. It's an investment, right?
Can you transfer? Can you transfer? Can you transfer that to another? I'm not, I'm not trying to be funny here. This is serious, but at the same time, I, I could see where. Oh, all of a sudden, our county cemetery becomes owned by an investor that thinks, wait a minute. I can buy up 18 plots at $300 apiece and sell them for 900 apiece because the going rate is now 1,500 apiece. And is that possible?
Not, I'm going to say the paperwork. You have a paperwork shuffle on all of these owners and sell, sales.
Yeah, exactly.
It's not just something where you can buy it and sell it.
Doug Holmes, for the record, I believe it's in the rules that you can't sell it to somebody else. You have to sell it back to the county and the county can sell it to somebody else. I mean, if I buy a family plot, of course, I can put anybody that's related to me in that plot. Where I can say, hey, Josh, you can have this plot here, but I can't sell it to you.
Hey, Josh, you can have this plot. Well, they're just going to pay cash under the table.
And we'll never know that.
Yeah, we, we can't, yeah.
Can't police everything.
But so just, I guess, just the final question is, you guys are saying this is what is costing us now? It's not even covering all of our expenses.
Yes.
Okay.
So. Madam Chair.
Commissioner Hawke, yes.
What is the difference between what we're paying and what we should be getting to cover the cost? What are, what are we bringing in and what is it costing us?
Give me 30 seconds.
Go get your notes.
Oh, 25. You are efficient.
Joshua, I can come forward for the record. So for last fiscal year, which is sent to June 30th, and we're still not necessarily done booking costs back to what's close. We're, we spent approximately $25,000 more than we brought in the year before. The year before, we spent approximately 22,000 more, the year before, about 12,000 more, the year before that, almost 30,000 more. So, and I actually have. Eight years worth that I averaged out to, because you get those fluctuations. One year you spend 12,000, another year you spend 27,000, another year you spend 25,000. So I averaged it out when I took a look at it.
So you're saying we, we received like on your 21, 22 here. Received 23,125, but it actually, they cost us 45,000, 48,000.
That would be approximately.
So what if we had a tax on the dead people that are already there? There you go. Death tax, yeah. You just go to the family and say, now you owe us taxes because you only paid $25 for the plot. Being facetious, but this, I just, I just look at this and say, wow, 300 to 1,500 is outrageous. We did consider, as I said last year on the board, 500, 600. I've been waiting for this fee thing to go up, to start paying some of the extra, but the board was willing to go five or 600. And looking, I know you say that these other counties only have one cemetery, but you've got Mineral County, 250, Churchill, 350, Pershing, 250. Even Carson City's 1,300. I'm sure that they probably have some more expenses too, but. You know, and we're basically overall 500 and Smith Valley's 300. So we looked at, yeah, we need to be the same. Let's go to $500 or $600, but. Yeah.
I'm done.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
I will take a stab at a motion. I'll try to make a motion that we. Approve, approve acceptance of the option regarding the inch, no.
Where you at?
20A. Sorry, I had the wrong. 20, sorry. I approve the fee schedule for Lyon County Department's effective August. 15, 2022. With the exception of the Smith Valley, of the funeral schedule, changing that from $1,500 to $1,000.
Yeah, so the question I have for you is, are we going to, does that motion include the cemetery plots at 450? So everything else is as. As presented, so the as presented would allow me to put the footnote, the veteran plots for military veterans are free of charge.
Correct.
And that we are keeping mobile home manufactured home set permanent $500.
All those changes, yep.
Okay.
So everything that was presented and we're just reducing the cemetery fee from the proposed 1,500.
And that's, all of them are the same rate.
And just make everybody the same.
Yes.
Why? So you, you're saying the, the cremation should be a quarter.
250.
Should be 250 and so 450 if we change that.
It doesn't.
Should be 450 instead of 250.
250. It was proposed at 450, so if we're down 1,001, we would do 250.
No, because if, if it's, if it's 500 now, we're doubling it, then 150 would be 300.
You can get, you can get four cremation plots in one cemetery.
That's why it's usually a fourth of the cost.
Well, the proposal wasn't a fourth.
I was just going to say that.
It was 1,500 and 450.
That's correct. What I did is I took an approximate uniform percentage up from what we currently had in those, but if, if there's, if they, if the community. A community development facilities director says that they do four in one, it would, if we're doing that, let's make it so it's four to one. So we would change that proposal for the cemetery or for the cremation plus to 250 if we change that.
I don't, I don't know that we have to. If, if we're, we're getting 450 now. Oh.
We're getting 150.
Okay, so it still would go up. To 250 instead of 150. I'm fine with that in my motion.
Yeah.
Well, it's going to be one flat right now, so it'll all be the same countywide.
So will you manage your motion today?
Just to, 250. For the cremation plot, yes.
I'll second that.
Okay, so just for clarification, so the motion is to approve the fee resolution. As proposed, with the cemetery fee to be only 1,000 countywide. And cemetery or cremation lots.
250.
250 countywide. And veterans stay free.
And the manufactured homes separate would stay.
Well, that's why I'm saying as.
Yeah, as presented.
Rest of it. Okay, is that correct?
Correct.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Jacobson, seconded by Commissioner Henderson. Any further discussion from the board? Okay, I'm going to go to public comment on this. Anybody for public comment? Okay, I see none on Zoom, one in chambers.
It's Randall Green from Silver Springs, Nevada. I think it should just be break, break even for another county. The county should be, we shouldn't pay more than what it costs. I mean, so it should fluctuate, I guess. Fees. If, if these go. It should be a breaking point. So whatever county pays and all the fees go with that. I don't know how you. Not very good at this stuff. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
Madam, I'm, I'm confused. I'm sorry. So.
You're allowed to be.
That's good. So the manufact, so the, what's staying at 500?
Under the building item, the new item number eight.
Yeah.
Instead of being a fee based evaluation, we're saying we should leave that at 500.
They're leaving it a flat fee.
Why?
Andrew Haskin for the record. So I've got to do a little bit more research into this. I inadvertently changed the wrong fee in the schedule. So what happens is there's a set fee and then there's a fee for foundations for electrical plumbing and. You know, natural gas hookups, all that kind of stuff. That was the fee that I was trying to change, not the set permit fee, and I got it confused.
Okay.
Terminology from our system to the fee schedule.
Okay, okay.
I did the, and I prepared the business impact statement based on this, so would have to redo it. So we'll, we'll wait on it.
Long, long as you're good with it, I'm good with it.
Yeah.
I, I, I just got confused.
No problem.
So they're just asking to leave it alone?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion to second. We've got public comment. Again, any further discussion? All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes three to one. Thank you, Josh. And I don't like those hard, you know, we need to start addressing things before we're double, triple 100 times. Yeah.
I wasn't the one who said this, just.
I know you can give it back to him now. Okay. All right, moving on. 21A for presentation only. Cool, I don't, we don't have to vote. Presentation on ordinance regarding catalytic converters and other program options. For Lyon County that may help reduce catalytic converter effects. If you can stop that, that would be great, Steve. Every county would want to know your secret.
Steve Bride, DA, Chair Honeywell's here too. He may have a few comments as we work through this. And also working on this with Brandy Jensen, the Ferling City Attorney. She couldn't be here today, but she's involved in this discussion. So probably a couple of months ago, the. She couldn't be here today, but she's involved in this discussion. So probably a couple of months ago, the board asked for us to come back. And just give a little bit of information on this, if there was anything we could do, given the rise in catalytic converter thefts across the country and in Lyon County. So just a little quick background, I have just a really short presentation, a few comments, and then get some board input. And then probably ask to bring it back in September with some proposed action. As you all know, from your communities and from reading the news. Catalytic converter thefts have increased dramatically. And the reason for that, you can see on this slide, is the precious metals in catalytic converters, rhodium, palladium and platinum. And you get a few grams out of each catalytic converter and the prices per ounce are pretty high. Those are prices about August first of this year. They fluctuate quite a bit. That should be fourteen thousand five hundred per ounce on the rhodium, not that there's an extra zero on that there. There has been an increase in thefts in Lyon County. We don't have any stats on that right now. We'll bring some back in September. I know our office in firmly handled eight cases directly involving catalytic converter thefts in the last year. We've had one person go to prison related to that. We have had some success. The sheriff's office has worked diligently trying to put together some cases. They're just tough cases to put together. And to catch people, so they are working on those. But then we've also had some thefts from, I think, county vehicles. Some of the ways you can reduce theft, obviously, we they seem obvious, but we don't often. Remind people of most of these thefts in in Lyon County are happening on streets or in parking lots. So the best thing to do is park in lighted areas and always report suspicious activity in the neighborhoods. See anybody messing around with cars, call sheriff's office. I just a list for sort of background information. This was on a website, the top cars for converter thefts. And I know I would assume that has to do with the precious metals, but this is a list of cars that seem to be targeted. The target areas for the thieves, as I just mentioned, business lots, driveways and streets are the main places that we see it. Legislative action, there's a lot going on around the country. Congress has introduced a bill. It doesn't have any traction yet, but it would be a federal law that would require certain things. On catalytic converters when they're installed, twenty states have enacted bills. And Nevada, we'll talk about a little bit, has something I believe on the radar for the twenty twenty three session. Reno and other cities and counties across Nevada and. Across the country as an inactive ordinances to curb thefts. The challenges for law enforcement prosecution, obviously, the big one is catching the thieves. It's often done at night. They're skilled. They work quickly and they're in and out, so they're and they're usually gone from the community with the stolen property. Secondly, right now in Nevada, possession of a catalytic converter alone is not a crime, so. Even if the officer finds somebody in possession of a catalytic converter that's been sawed off. There's very little they can do unless they can find out where it's been stolen. They have other indicia that they're committing crimes or something like that. There's just not much the law enforcement officer can do. The used catalytic converter, they're probably getting between three and seven hundred dollars if they're lucky. That's a misdemeanor. They upped the misdemeanor a few years ago to twelve hundred dollars. Doesn't mean you can't prosecute them for that, but it does, do you, you know, mean an allocation of resources for Frank and his people. How much can you put on that if if a person has one catalytic converter? And lastly, connecting the catalytic converter to the. Vehicle it was stolen for from is is difficult, if not impossible. And so those are the challenges we face, yes.
Before you leave this slide, Mr. Right. Thank you, Madam Chair. The possession of a catalytic converter alone is not a crime. Can the police hold that, though, as possible evidence? And and if no one reports. That in a week, give it back, or are they unable to even hold on to that for possible evidence?
Yeah, as a general matter, they cannot hold it for evidence unless they have probable cause that it's been sold stolen and they can seize it based on that. So.
Oh.
Yeah, I don't know if that makes sense, but they can't just because you have one, the police can't take it from you right now as the law is written and hold it.
That takes out a lot of problems, because I guess in my eyes, so all right.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Frank, that you agree with that?
Well, the whole purpose behind is what you had already said about there's no VIN number, there's no identification to prove where it came from, right? So a part to part of a car, whether it's a catalytic converter or not.
Right. Yeah. So some of the county solutions we're we're thinking about. Obviously, the first one is an ordinance in Lyon County at the city of Fernley. To make possession of a catalytic converter a crime if certain conditions are met. And this is the same thing that was done in the city of Reno. I prepared a draft ordinance that we tapped to the packet today. That's based on the language from the city of Reno. So that's one option that we're looking at. Secondly, sharing information out on ways to reduce thefts. Through social media, through the county website, through the sheriff's, social media and website, you park in your cars, catalytic theft. Prevention devices, things like that. We can share out some information on that. Make law enforcement reporting information available to scrap yards. Which are mainly outside of Lyon County, probably for the thefts in Lyon County. So just making the resources available to contact the Lyon County Sheriff's Office if you have information that they're coming from Lyon County. Consider alternative programs such as the Washoe County Sheriff. For identifying catalytic converters, which is a stencil program where they mark your catalytic converter. So if it's removed, it can be linked to the car it was taken from. And then support these etching events, same thing as they're doing in Washoe County, but there are private companies, insurance companies. Others that will do etching events for catalytic converters in various municipalities. I don't know if they would do it in Lyon County. But but those are some of the options that the county could consider in addressing these these additional thefts. So that that's all I had on the presentation. Sheriff Honeywell may want to say a few things. Attached to your packet are just a couple of items. Draft ordinance for Lyon County, the city of Fernley would be encouraged to adopt similar ordinance. We like to have consistency because the sheriff's office is patrolling in the city of Fernley. And so we like to have the the laws be the same. The city attorney, Brandy Jensen, has been very supportive of these kind of. Measures, so she's on board if that's the direction the sheriff recommends. And that way, the sheriff's office would have the same enforcement mechanism across the county. Also, in your packet, it's the press release from the Washoe County Sheriff's Office announcing their etching. Their stencil program, and Frank will talk a little bit about that. And then also I've attached another ordinance from the city of Houston, just another example. That ordinance is a little broader targets, rather than just the individual with the catalytic converter targets. Some of the scrap metal providers and others that deal in that kind of material. So it's just a little bit different style ordinance, a little bit broader. The legislature is looking at amending the. Sounds like there'll be a bill draft to amend the Nevada revised statutes where they make. Possession of scrap metal a crime unless certain conditions are met. They're gonna try to include catalytic converters in that statute. That would certainly be a help. That's gonna be six to nine months out, though, and a little bit uncertain at this point, but that is something that after the first of September, we should be able to share some more information about. Any questions before I turn it over to Frank, Commissioner Henderson?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. I just a question. Or given that possession alone of a catalytic converter is not a violation of state law. And that we are a Dillens rule state, that we have the authority to enact an ordinance, making possession in Lyon County. A crime, or do we have to declare it a matter of local concern before we could do that?
I haven't looked at whether we'd have to declare it a matter of matter of local concern. I don't think there would be an issue doing that. I do believe under two forty four, though, you do have a. The ability to opt to enact a police ordinance like this without first declaring it a matter of local concern. If that's an issue, if I do bring back an ordinance, so I have a definite.
Frank, I'm just gonna add a little bit to what Steve said, just clarify the Washoe County program, just so you guys have full understanding how that works. Is Washoe County, so some local businesses that came to Washoe County offered up some money to to fund this stencil program. So they give the sheriff's office money, they got a stencil machine, they run it to the detective's office. Register with the sheriff's office, you get a number, they hand you this stencil, you take it to one of five local shops within Washoe County that volunteer services, stencil numbers on their. Cars, or you can do it yourself. The reason that that's an advantage is that once you have a catalytic converter stencil. And if you recover it, we recovered it as law force, and now it's possession of stolen property, so it's a felony. So that's the advantage of whether you took a scribe or and and did it, or if you stencil or whatever else, if there's some identified number that identifies that catalytic converter. Along with Michelle Hockaday, and it's in Jeff's car, and I could rest Jeff with the sentence. So that's that's how that program works. It's a hundred percent funded by donations, so it's not cost insured, available any money. But that's what they're doing. Washoe County choose to do that versus doing an ordinance, because the disadvantage to the ordinance. Is once you charge somebody under the ordinance, you can't charge them another scrap statement or a scrapping in our S. So but like Steve alluded to, sheriffs and chiefs have put together a proposal to change the scrapping that we're in our S right now to include possession of catalytic converters specifically as stolen property. So if that gets changed, then that changes the rules of the game quite a bit for us. Because then that one instance, we've come across somebody's guy cut off catalytic converter in their car, and it's proven that they had ownership to it, possession of stolen property.
Any questions? Okay, we'll figure it out.
Bring it back.
Yeah, the plan is we'll bring it back after September one. We'll see what the BDRs say. Give you some information on that and we'll have probably an ordinance option if the board is interested in proposing something like that. Thank you.
Okay, twenty one B for possible action approved proclamation recognizing August twenty twenty two as Child Support Awareness Month in Lyon County.
Thanks, Steve Brey, District Attorney. This is something the Child Support Office brings forward every August. Just recognizing this month, it's Child Support Awareness and appreciating the support from Human Services, Child Support, other personnel in the county that help families collect support that helps children in their needs. And so today, we're just asking that the board recognize this month, recognize all those that are involved. Including the parents that support their children and others that support children in the community.
Any questions? Got a good emotion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve a proclamation recognizing August twenty twenty two as Child Support Awareness Month in Lyon County.
Second. Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Henderson, seconded by Commissioner Hockaday. Any further discussion? Public comment? I have nobody. Okay. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Rye. Okay, twenty two A for possible action to approve task order one sixteen with Far West Engineering for an amount not to exceed. Two million one hundred forty two thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. I see you smiling up there for administrative construction management and technical services associated with the Rolling A wastewater treatment facility phase four expansion project. Mr. Burketa.
Madam Chair Commissioners, David Burketa for the record. So I'm gonna give just a fifty thousand foot overview of this task order, and then online we have Kishore Panda and Far West Engineering, just to answer any specific questions you may have associated with the very elements of this. But I recognize this is a large amount of money, but what what it is impacting is a fifteen plus million dollar project. So our rolling expansion, the wastewater treatment plants expected to go to bid this fall, early winter. So what this is doing is preparing this to get up to get set for that and then get us through that project. And then the completion side of it, like some O and M manuals, things associated that will be required. So that project itself is, our current estimate is about a little over fifteen million dollars. Part of this will be shoring it up as we go through our bid process, just prior to it, to get some more current numbers, to find out what that is. But what this task order covers is it covers ten different elements, and these are very standard elements that we've had to associate with the other projects. But it is to one, complete the final design so that we can get ready to go to bid. It's for a big document prep and support. That's normally not part of construction administration. It's just, you know, we don't have a trained staff to do these projects, so we've relied on Far West to do that. The construction administration, construction observation, and then special inspections. Again, typically, special inspections are not part of this. Our building department doesn't have some of the required certifications needed for it, so we have to bring on contractors to complete the required inspections. Engineering support during construction and then project closeout. At the end of this, we'll need to complete an O and M manual, an operation and maintenance manual, which would be required by. Regulatory agency. And then in this, we have County Direction Services, which is the, you know, our contingency to use for this project that equates to just slightly over one percent of the total project cost. So with that, with these ten elements, Far West is spending an enormous amount of in-house resources to help us through this project. And they're also overseeing a list of sub consultants, which include Jacobs, Sierra Controls, Lumison Associates, CR Mechanical Engineering. Hartman Structural Engineering, Couch Environmental Consultants and Preconstruction Services Group. So I know in the past, what we've talked a lot about. Has to do with percentages, and typically, construction administration is a percentage of the project cost. And that's used as the guideline to say, are we within the norms? Typically, our practice has always been that construction administration accounts for up to about twelve percent of the total project cost. In this case, it would equate to a little over ten percent. So we're well within the norms established for projects like this. Again, it's just a large project. So with that being said, if you have specific questions related to the details, we have the right people online to be able to help answer those questions.
Mr. Jacobson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. When I was reading through this on page four hundred and fourteen, I believe. And thank you, by the way, for the presentation and being there. It says, prepare ten change orders for approval and signatures by county contractor and engineer. I I I don't know. What chain those ten change orders are.
So typically, what we have to do in order to estimate how much engineering time will be associated with the project, they have to put it in a box of the number on there. They have to say, here's here's what we would consider, you know, an estimate associated with the project and change orders, so they can calculate how much staff time would be required to do that. So ten would be a number that would just be an estimate for a project of this size nature.
And before a change order happens, you approve that, or who approves the, otherwise, if I'm a contractor, I'm. Oh, yeah, we're gonna change this up to ten times.
So the change order and that change order, the change order process is spelled out in the contract docs. But what happens is it goes through the engineering side of it, because change orders are typically related to a drawing or aspects of the engineering of it. So they're done and they're approved ultimately through the. The county engineer, and then once they come to the county engineer, then they'll come to you for sign off. In our owner directed services, the two hundred thousand dollars that we're estimating, that's typically what is used to cover any changes associated with the projects.
Thank you.
Jeff, can you do me a favor and look to see who's unmuted? Playing with the dog? Okay, well, I guess I we got a couple of people unmuted, so I'm just gonna ask the question, whoever's got. Okay, well, I guess I've got a couple of people unmuted, so I'm just going to ask the question, whoever's got a dog with them, you're not muted. Could you please mute yourself? Mike. Okay, well, not hearing the dog now, so I guess we're good. Questions for Mr. Burkett?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Not really a question, just a comment on the last page on four nineteen, where it actually gives the compensation. Yeah, it states that hourly rates and other expenses shall be in accordance with Exhibit C of the Master Services Agreement. In the future, if you just attach that to these, so I could see what the actual hourly rates are.
Any other questions? No. Okay, can I get a motion?
No. Motion, yeah. I'll make a motion to approve task order one sixteen with Far West Engineering for an amount not to exceed two million one hundred forty-two thousand six hundred fifty dollars for administrative construction management and technical services associated with rolling a wastewater treatment plant phase four expansion project.
Well, second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Hawkeye, seconded by Commissioner Jacobson. At this time, we're going to go to public comment. Do we have any public comment on this item? You see any hands, Jeff? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Burkett. And Mr. Panda, you got off easy today. Okay, it looks like we are down to agenda request. Let me start with Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Page, I'd like to invite DOR and/or TCID to come speak to us, maybe in our first meeting in September to discuss their plans for the Turkey Canal running through city of firmly.
Commissioner Henderson.
Not at this time.
Commissioner Hawkeye.
Not at this time.
And I don't have anything at this moment. Other than all agree with Commissioner Jacobson, it'd be nice that if everybody was on, I went through a presentation here a week ago with the new director. Yeah, might be kind of interesting to bring him in here and update us on what they're doing. So Commissioner, now go back, Commissioner comments, the start down the same line, Commissioner Jacobson.
You know, I had something, and I got the same thing that bit Jeff earlier. I might, if I think of it while I'm listening to the others, I'll.
We seem to have a new train depot in, in here today. Yeah. Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to compliment you on a very well-run meeting. It's been a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hawkeye.
No more comments.
I do remember what it was.
Okay.
And I agree with Commissioner Henderson. Well done today. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to remind everyone, I know that Highway fifty is, is an issue, and elsewhere, our schools will be opening. So let's drive carefully. I believe they're open before our next meeting, so be careful, watch for those kids every year. We do not need tragedy.
Thank God my wife's coming back to work.
Jeff. Anyways, yeah, no, it's been a great meeting today, and I think we got through that fairly painlessly. Mr. Page, you have something?
Our next board meeting, we will finish up here, and then that evening, we'll be doing a workshop on waste management today.
Yeah, I heard about.
Always franchise, sorry.
You do, you do know that's the afternoon after the meeting here that we always go to the fairgrounds to set up for the fair.
I'm sorry.
So now I have to delegate somebody else to go do that.
Here, but it was requested we do it in Dayton, so. The next board meeting, we'll be doing a workshop that evening in Dayton for the.
And so we're going to start off in Yarrington, and then we're going to drive to Dayton. Who's serving dinner?
Andrew, it's his plan.
No, I, I thought.
Six. Sorry, I didn't pick the day. Great.
Told you it's a bad day.
Terrible day.
Sheriff. Oh, okay. Well, I was going to say, yeah, you don't really fit under Commissioner comments, and we don't have a closed session, so I will go to public participation for anything that was not on the agenda today.
Sure, Frank, hold up for the record. One thing, important thing, I forgot to pass on you guys, effective Monday, all of our patrol operations in Silver Springs are now running out of the McAteer building. Not the Lake Street building.
Okay.
So we have a secretary, substation starting, we're in the process of starting to open up that substation there. So the detective operations that are undercover stuff is still running out of the Lake Street building, but all the control functions.
Oh, okay.
Sergeant stationed there, okay, over the week. And a couple of other things you can start to. As of Monday, that's where our substation secretaries were down there. Okay. Sources of that, so I just want to let you guys know that.
Gotcha. Okie dokie, any other public participation? Not seeing any hands up, so we are adjourned.